Thank you, Sean, and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Milton Select Board. On July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. This act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law, other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with this act, all votes by the select board will be taken by roll call. I'd like to call the meeting to order just after seven o'clock, it's seven oh two. Introductions, I'm Office Doyle, this year's select board chair. Mr. Vice Chair?
Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
Mr. Wells?
Mr. Wells, Secretary.
Roxanne, member.
Thank you. Nick, could you introduce yourself, please?
Eric Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator.
Anne Marie? I am muted. There you go.
Sorry, Anne Marie Fagan.
That's all right. Lyndon did that on purpose.
Hi, good evening. Lyndon Athalie, Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
Thank you very much. And Member Bradley will not be able to be with us this evening. She extends her regrets. At this time, reminded that we are only a few days away from the twenty-first anniversary of nine eleven, or the twentieth anniversary, of which we marked last year with a significant event. Member Wells was very much a partner in making that a hallmark event. I'd like to suggest that as we all pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States, we think of all those who were directly and indirectly affected by nine eleven. So please join for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice. Injustice for all. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to turn to Agenda Item Number Three, which is public comment. And let's see if we have some attendees with their hands raised. We do have one, Catherine Simpson. Just as a refresher, we have a public comment a period of fifteen minutes during each select board meeting. Each person has, wishing to comment, has up to three minutes to make a comment. If there are no other people wishing to make public comment, we can return to that person if they need additional time for up to an additional three minutes. So if we could move up Catherine Simpson, who is recognized. Catherine, welcome.
Hello, thank you. So I would just like to confirm that you are in receipt of a letter from Dr. Sarah Evans from the Children's Environmental Health Center at Mount Sinai dated September sixth, twenty twenty-two. It was sent to the Select Board, as well as a couple of other boards in town. And this letter strongly discourages the installation of artificial turf playing fields and fields due to uncertainties around the safety of these products and the potential for dangerous heat and chemical exposures. I would also like to note that this board has a fundamental obligation to protect both the children and the environment of this town. And that with receipt of this letter, you now have advanced notice of potential harm to both the children and environment. So I would just like to confirm that this luck board did receive that letter.
Thank you, Catherine, and I can confirm for you that the letter was recently received by the Select Board.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells, I'm sorry. Did I miss you? Your hand is raised?
It is, it is, Mr. Chair, but I'll wait till any other public comment.
Thank you. We have two additional hands raised. Tonya Morris was next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Tonya, welcome. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. It's nice to be invited. My name is Tanya Morris, and I have a colleague, Katie Alma, is on the line. We represent K L Scott Associates. And we have been working very closely with Anna Marie and Paige on the DNI initiative. And I really wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at and where we're going. We were excited about this here. So I just want to give you a brief overview. We kicked off the survey, and we had like a forty percent response rate, which is not bad. A participant, meaning employees, that participated and responded to the survey. The survey.
Tonya, if I may interrupt for just a moment?
Yes.
We do have you on the agenda, the report from K L Scott.
Okay, I'll wait.
For detail.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That be okay? No, that's all right.
Yes, I think we're on number six, so I can definitely wait.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Paul Makashima, if I'm pronouncing Paul's surname correctly, has his hand up. Paul?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for being with us.
Well, thank you for the time. In addition to Catherine's request, I'm asking whether you received, whether all the members of the board received a letter from the National Conservation Group, the Sierra Club, which was addressed to, should have been addressed to each of the members concerning their environmental concerns about artificial turf and their opposition to the, the Guile Road turf field specifically. And if you haven't received a copy of that letter, we can certainly have that resent to you. And if, in fact, you have received the letters, both letters, we're hoping that, that those things, that will be reflected in the minutes for tonight's meeting?
Thank you. Affirmative on that, Paul. And if my memory says me correctly, we received that letter approximately two weeks ago. Does that sound right? Anne Marie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I, I would, I'd like to, I'm sorry, one other thing?
Certainly.
We, we also wanted to mention that the, the, we don't know if this, if this caught your notice. We suspected you people are all busy and have other, many other issues that you're looking at, but we wanted to point out that last week, a decision was, was revealed last week from the city of Boston, that the mayor of the city of Boston, Michelle Wu, has determined that no additional artificial turf fields will be installed in the city of Boston. And that they had plans to put, to install an artificial turf field in Malcolm X Park in Roxbury, and for reasons of equity, decided that instead that they would, they would install natural grass. There was concern about the heat island effect. A lot of residents were concerned about the chemicals that make up the artificial turf. And they, both this, things like the carcinogenic potential for that. In addition, they were concerned about things like asthma and their children. So they made that request. The city of Boston decided that not only would they reverse themselves on the Malcolm X Park, but in fact, they would take one additional step, and they've just decided that they are not going to put any additional artificial turf fields in the city for the, for the time being, anyway. And we have one last request, and this is, I don't even know, you, you guys might even be the wrong people to address this. But we're hoping that, that you can ask us, ask the Parks Department to begin recording their meetings so that we can watch them, you know, where school is starting up, and a lot of us are heading back to the office. And so we're not, we've been attending Parks meetings for the past couple of months, and we're not all going to be able to attend, and we'd like to be able to see what's going on. We keep a close eye on the minutes, but minutes are difficult. So if you could, if you could help us out and maybe pass along to them, that, that it would be wonderful for us, anyway, if they could record their meetings going forward, we'd appreciate it.
We will pass that along for you, sir.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Seeing no other hands, Mr. Wells, you are recognized.
You put my hand down, Mr. Chair, because otherwise I'll leave it up for the night. I just wanted to thank you. Most people don't realize that twenty-one years ago, nine eleven happened. It's the nine eleven of our parents' lives. And each time that I've had the opportunity, and as I will do again tonight, I just want to thank the residents of the town who came forward. You've heard me tell the story, but most people don't know the role that this community played in it, in nine eleven. For me, I was a young lieutenant, never expected to be at nine eleven, and I was there twice a week for three months. And this community, as well as so many residents, we supported five hundred first responders for three months following nine eleven. And I've never forgotten that. I've never forgotten the carnage, and I'm very grateful that you remembered it, because it's easy to forget in life. But on a day, and I, to Mr. Milano, who was on his first day, when nine eleven happened, I was actually in the Cronin Conference Room at a meeting with Mr. Cronin. And Mrs. Blute walked in and said that a second plane had struck Wiltray Tower. And I remember the look on John's face, having known him all of my life, as you did, Mr. Chair, and Anne Marie. We knew right then and there something was serious, and little did I know this community would have such an an important role, and I just want to thank again all the people who really stepped up and helped support so many in need during those three months. We should never forget this day, and we should never forget the atrocity it's committed on these countries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Attribution for the recognition has to go to Ms. Fagan. It was she who.
I'm sure it was.
And.
He was there.
You tend to. Turning to item number four, we welcome, of course, our new town administrator. The Milton Select Board is pleased to welcome Nicholas Milano, who was unanimously selected as Milton's new town administrator, beginning his first day just yesterday. And we use that for a photo op, as a matter of fact. Mr. Milano previously served as Assistant Town Administrator for the town of Medfield, Massachusetts. His prior experience includes service as a senior policy analyst for the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, as executive aide to the mayor of Marlborough, Massachusetts, as project coordinator for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and as a legislative aide in Massachusetts. Mr. Milano earned his Bachelor of Arts from the Commonwealth Honors College at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and holds a Master of Urban Affairs degree from Boston University. He also earned a certificate in local government management and leadership, sponsored by the Massachusetts Municipal Association and Suffolk University. Please join in congratulating and welcoming Nicholas Milano, our new town administrator. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Milano to share some comments that he may wish to make.
Thank you for that introduction, and just thank you to the board for this opportunity. I look forward to working closely with you moving forward from here on out. And I would be remiss to thank Lynn, Anne Marie, and Paige in our office for helping me transition over the past few, few weeks, and especially the last two days. Had a chance to meet everybody in Town Hall. I was over at the Police Department today, so I'll be out and about over the next few weeks, getting to meet everybody, seeing everybody's facilities, spending some time to just get to know the employees, residents, and board and committee members. So feel free to reach out, stop into Town Hall. We're there. Happy to sit down with anybody. So I appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick that anybody wishes to make, or any comments that they wish to make? Seeing none, that suggests you're securely entrenched now in your new responsibilities. And we all wish you very well, and our support will be with you all the way. Turning now to Agenda Item Number Five. This is a continuation from an item that we previously attended to. It is a three-step zoning board of appeals appointment process, and we should have Mr. Prandak with us this evening. So if we could please make Mr. Prandak the panelist. Welcome back, Joe.
Thank you, Chairman Doyle, members of the board. Ms. Fagan, Ms. Denapoli, Mr. Milano, welcome. And yes, we're here for part three of, of what is a three-part process to appoint a zoning administrator. The, the process is dictated by the Zoning Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section thirteen. In, in part one, the board approved some qualifications for the new zoning administrator. In, in part two, the Zoning Board of Appeals appointed, has appointed Ms. Virginia Donahue King, longtime member of the board, longtime resident of Milton, and, and a successful attorney. And so this process, this tonight's step three is for confirmation of Ms. King in that position as zoning administrator. And happy to answer any questions that I can. Mr. Chairman Leonard of the Zoning Board of Appeals has, of course, with his board carefully considered Ms. King's appointment, and we're hoping for swift confirmation.
Thank you very much. That's most appreciated. And Chairman Leonard wrote on August twenty-nine regarding this appointment. I'll just briefly read a few passages from his letter. Mrs. King is a graduate of Wellesley College and Suffolk Law School. She has been a practicing attorney in the town of Milton for twenty-nine years, and has served as a town meeting member for many years. Mrs. King has served with distinction as a member of the Town of Milton Board of Appeals for over twenty years. During that time, she has considered and voted on at least one hundred administrative hearings involving all aspects of the Milton zoning bylaw. She has authored numerous clear and well-written zoning decisions, and has sat as chairperson on many occasions in the absence of the chairman. At all times, Mrs. King has been patient, kind, and caring in her dealings with the public. She exercises sound judgment in her decisions, and is always well-prepared, organized, fair, and objective in carrying out her responsibilities to the members of the public in the Board of Appeals. I wholeheartedly and without reservation endorse Mrs. King's appointment as Milton zoning administrator. Respectfully request that the Select Board of the Town of Milton confirm Mrs. King's appointment pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section thirteen. Respectfully submitted, John S. Leonard, Chairman, Town, Milton Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Virginia King as a zoning administrator for the Town of Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. There's a second for Mr. Zulus. Any questions or comment? Seeing no hands raised by roll call. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Masto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Prandak, thank you for being with us, and.
Pleasure.
We'll join with you in conveying the appointment to Chairman Leonard.
I will pass this along first thing in the morning. Thank you, Wells.
You're very welcome. And now we will turn to item Agenda, Agenda Item, rather, Number Six. Discussion Update, K L Scott and Associates Diversity Equity and Inclusion Strategy Within the Town of Milton. Paige Appolito is going to introduce this topic for us. Antonia, thank you for your patience.
That's okay. Thank you.
Paige?
Oh, yes. Hi, good evening. Thank you.
Turn to you.
Thank you. So yes, I'm going to introduce Tanya Morris. She's from K L Scott and Associates, who will give you an update on the diversity equity inclusion strategy that they had come up with for the Town of Milton.
Thank you, Paige. And Chairman Doyle, I'm sorry, I got so anxious when you pulled me in and got ready to talk about it, because this is some important information here. But just to give you a little bit of information, we, K L Scott is a consultant, a management consultant firm that focuses on diversity equity inclusion and belonging work through government, municipality, state, and federal. And we are excited to work with you all. We've been working with Paige and Anna Marie on what can we do to move this effort forward. We began this effort by launching a, a diversity equity and inclusion survey to the employees. We had about ninety-six employees respond it, which is probably a forty percent response rate, which is not bad at all. And in that response, we had a couple of criterias. We had four different buckets. We had the diversity. We had questions around diversity. We had questions around equity, inclusion, and belonging. The diversity, equity, and inclusion were on a, like a scale one to five, agree to, to disagree. And then the belongings, yes and no questions. We also put together some qualitative and quantitative data as well. We did do a focus group as well, so we have that information. And really, from a high-level standpoint, what we, what came out of that, that survey and the information that we obtained and from the document review, our current assessment is that we probably would, would want to recommend more training for this, for the, the city of Milton, and also support Paige in the, the policy development around diversity equity inclusion. And when I say support policy, looking at how we're recruiting, looking at our progression policies within the organization. One of the things I also want to mention that Katie has done some, some additional work around the quantitative, if you want to share some of the topics that came out of that as well.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so as Tanya was mentioning, we analyzed the qualitative data from the survey, so these are the kind of open-ended comments people had sent in. And the themes that emerged had to do with teamwork, collaboration, leadership, compensation, career development, and so using the information, those themes from the qualitative data, we're going to incorporate that, and it is incorporated into our recommendations and the plan for, for moving forward.
So we are really excited about this here, because, you know, anytime you do a survey, it's your benchmark. It's your current state. Where are you? And then you can move forward on some things that you can move the effort. I'm looking forward to talking to Mr. Nicholas Malino, getting you up to speed on how we came around the data that we, we captured, and where we go from here. So we just wanted to come on and kind of meet you all and tell you what we have been doing behind the scenes. We did debrief the information to the department heads, Anna Marie and Paige. And so now with the recommendation, we can now be informed to push it out a little bit more, but we wanted to wait to talk to Mr. Malino to see if he had some insight of how he wants us to do things once we catch him up on what we've done. So that's what we wanted to report out. So I guess I asked, are there any questions that anyone may have?
Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, good morning. You're better off being, listen, you're better off being Agenda Number Six than public comment, because while I was here and you're all set. So just with regard to training, is this something that K L Scott would facilitate, or would want to find this out? How would you want to proceed?
Yes, we are, I'm going to be working closely with Paige, but we are going to facilitate the training, and we're going to customize it according to what we believe that, with your collaboration, or with the team collaboration on the topics. We, it would be virtual. We'll probably do a management track and a staff track. We do believe that managers are. We do believe that managers are ambassadors to help us move this process forward. But we also want employees to know what it is. So we're going to come from it from an awareness approach. And we wanted to be interactive so people can walk away learning. Did I answer your question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You did. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto, you're recognized. Then Mr. Zulus.
Thank you. And so with the trainings, are there several trainings that go along with this? Is it a one-time training? Is it over a period of time? Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yes. Thank you for asking that question. It's going to be a series of trainings. Some of the trainings that we have identified and we're going to get them finalized. We wanted the foundations of DNI. We do want to do unconscious bias. We do want to talk about crucial conversations to help managers have those kind of conversations. And then we are going to talk about probably microaggressions as well and anti-racism. Those are some of the ones that have been brought up, but we are open to cultural competency, different training. So it will be over a period of time. We're going to map that out with Paige over the period of time. And then we do a communication launch so employees can participate in it. We did recognize or talked to Paige about it and we want some of the training to be mandatory because in order to make changes, you want people to be a part of it. Did I answer your question, Ms.?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any follow-up, Roxanne?
I was just wondering if you foresaw that the trainings would be like a yearly training competency kind of thing? Or how you envisioned it?
One of the recommendations, that's a great question, is that from the, and that's where we talked about supporting Paige in some of the policy development and processes. We do want for like onboarding new employees, we do want to have a track for that. We do want to take everyone through this process and then we reevaluate the ones that we want to refresh your courses. But for the remainder of this year and probably some parts of next year, depending on how far we get along with the training, we do want this to be an ongoing process. But I do believe that onboarding new employees is great to have as a part of the process. That's one of the recommendations. But ongoing compliance, just like we do harassment training, I think this should be a part of it as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you both. Mr. Zulus, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Morris, Ms. Elmer, many, thank you very much for this start. A couple of questions. One is, our Equity and Justice for All Committee prepared a report that the board accepted last March. And that included a draft townwide policy on DEI. And this board did a first reading of that, but I think we put off the adoption of that policy subject to your findings and subject to your feedback. And have you had the opportunity to see that and will you be able to weigh in on that with what you, what we may do to improve it?
Paige, was that one of the documents that we, I don't think we got that document. And if you can send it to me tonight as early tomorrow, I would love to be able to, because we got enough quantitative and qualitative data to weigh in on that.
And it may, I can send, we can send you the, their committee, their final report from March. They did a survey as well last fall. So that might, but that was more, that was more of a resident survey. It wasn't an employee survey. So I think we can send you the whole report and the proposed policy is one of the appendices. It's an ex-
That'll be good to cross, to cross compare because how we came up with our data and our recommendation, we looked at three, three things, the focus groups, the document review, which is a literary review, and then the survey. And that's how we came up with our recommendation. But it would be great to see that because there may be some correlations. So I will, if you can send that to me, I'll be glad to look at that and make, I mean, we can weigh in on that.
Great.
Thank you.
And then second, as I read the initial report, it appeared that we have a lot of work to do on this.
You do, and yes.
Scores that the scores did not, at least to my eye, didn't read very well. So I wonder if you could give us a little flavor of that.
Yes. So, okay, so one of the things I would want to say is that there is no pass or fail. However, there are some opportunities. The score was a little bit lower than usual. However, it could be for a number of factors, you know. Something we didn't have, we only had ninety-six employees out of two hundred and, I think, thirty-nine participated. So that could be one. And then also, it's just a benchmark as well, too. And I think that we can look at, because a lot of things we may be doing well, we just may have to communicate it a little bit different and give people access to what we are doing and maybe have clearer policies in place. But it's not unusual to have a lower score for the benchmark because sometimes employees don't know what they're going to do with the data. And so what we need to do after this here, once we come up with a recommendation and decide what they are, we need to go back to the employees and say, listen, we have received your feedback. Your voice do matter. Here's some of the things that we're going to prioritize. And then when you do another one in the future, you'll see those scores go up a little bit higher.
All right. Well, that's very helpful. Thank you. And then, you know, in conjunction with the report that we'll send you, that committee, that advisory committee that we have made a number of recommendations that you'll see as well. So you might be able to marry some of those with the work that you're doing. And one of the recommendations is that we have a permanent committee that we're going to talk about later tonight. So you'll see that and, you know, certainly any, any help that you can give us in those, in implementing those recommendations, I think would be very helpful.
Right. So I'll be giving Paige and Mr. Malino a copy or the current assessment with the recommendation. And then the next thing we do is the last piece that before we get into training, it's a solution analysis where we come up with some goals and activities so we can have something that can chart us our pathway. So we won't jump into training just yet. We got the data for the survey, the recommendations. Then we get into solution analysis, which is here's some of the solution with some activity, almost like goal setting. And then we, and then we can do that. And then we get into training.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Arthur, you're on mute, aren't you?
That was very lucky for everybody. I want to thank you very much for the quality of your work, for being engaged with everyone and recognize Paige for her role in this important endeavor. We look forward to additional reports, of course, and I also want to extend a compliment to all of the staff and employees, administrators in the town of Milton who participated. As you noted earlier, we had an almost forty percent response rate and that is very positive. A very, very strong signal and sign. We encourage more in the future and invite any further comments or questions at this time. Anybody else? So thank you very much, Tanya and Katie, for being with us.
Thank you for having us. And I look forward to that report and I look forward to talking to Mr. Malino to get him up to speed on what we've done. Thank you.
Have a great evening. Our next agenda item, number seven, is discussion and appointment process for Equity and Justice for All Committee. Mr. Zulus, can we turn to you for this item, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in March, the board approved the establishment of a permanent advisory committee on equity and justice at the recommendation of the advisory committee that we had on equity and justice. And so, so we have that permanent advisory committee with a charge and with a proposed membership. And so now it comes to us to populate that committee. And so the question is how to do it. My understanding is that we don't have any current, any current volunteers for the committee. And so it seems to me we need to publicize it, similar to what we did two years ago when we, when we established the advisory committee. We publicized it through the website, through an email blast. I think we, I think, I'm pretty sure we even put a, an ad in the Milton Times as well in order to encourage volunteers. And so, so I think it's important to do that here to publicize it in all ways that we can. And we're going to talk about the youth task force later on. Similarly, we're going to have to get out and publicize that as well because we have no current, no current applicants for that as well. So, so my view is twofold. One is we need to publicize this to get some applicants and make people aware that we now have a permanent committee to be populated. And two, it may be premature, but we could discuss how we want to go about, how we want to go about appointing members of this committee, whether we want to discuss all of the proposed members, having listed them on the agenda or if we want to delegate, delegate to a subset of the board coming up with a slate from the applicants. Again, it may be premature to do that at this point since we don't have any current applicants, but that's something that we will have to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Mr. Wells, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to offshoot to Mr. Zulus's cover that we're no applicants, I thought that we were going to appoint many of the members of the existing committee that were interested and then backfill whatever openings that may exist from there. Am I wrong in that?
Mrs. Zulus?
Yeah, I think you're right, Richard, but I don't know that we've had the outreach to the existing committee members to see who was interested in staying on.
I thought that Pat in our last meeting to us stated that they were, that there was vast interest from their existing committee to become the permanent committee. I mean, that's my memory, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, I think you may be right. I just don't know, I don't know who the, who the specific members are who were interested in continuing.
I'm just saying this because for any of the little home watching this, I know there's interest there and I don't want them thinking that suddenly they've been erased. So that's my, that's my concern. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. Ms. Musto, you are recognized. And then Ms. Appolito.
Yes, I just have a couple of comments. One is about the committee. I noticed that, Mike, there was a new, in our packet, there was a new information packet that added some language into the charge of the committee and it also had some information about the terms. And I think that we should really, we have to discuss all of that. I think that's important to discuss because it was a little bit different than the original committee language. And so I think we should have a meeting that that's on the agenda to discuss that as well as the terms. I know it mentioned two-year terms and, you know, certain lengths of time. And I know Erin and I are going to be meeting at some point again to look at all of these committees. As you know, we have over ninety committees. This is certainly an important one to have. We're fortunate that we had KL Scott and Associates come in and they have some great ideas right now. So I feel like, you know, we can certainly work on this. But I also feel that we want to get it right. So my, I guess, recommendation would be that we, we need to have some time to talk about those extra points that were in that description. Certainly have the committee, but we also have, you know, simultaneously, we have this KL Scott and Associates. It's going to be doing some work for us. So I think that's a good thing. So I feel like we're sort of covered, you know, in a way. But again, I think that when I read it tonight and compared it to your, the previous charge, it is slightly different in the terms. We haven't discussed any of that. And we have a lot of committees. So I think this is an important committee to keep. I just want to put that out there. I'm just saying, I think we need to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Appolito, you are recognized. And then Mr. Zulus.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to agree with Mr. Wells as far as the committee that we did have in place. Most of them did say to me, once they realized we were working with KL Scott, that they would like to still be involved if and when we committed to a permanent committee.
Great news. Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
So, so just to clarify, that updated proposal was approved and established by the board on March nine. So that's, that updated proposal was discussed, was discussed with the equity committee, the advisory equity committee. And that was the proposal that was voted on and approved by the board on March nine. So it's, so it's not new to the board. Now, I guess the board could reconsider its approval of that, but this was done in conjunction with and in consultation with the advisory committee that we had, we had at the time.
Ms. Musto. And then Mr. Wells.
My thought would be that, I didn't know that, so thank you for clarifying that, Mike, because I went onto the website and I did not see that new one on there with that new section four. So section four was approved. Is that what you're saying? I think it would be worthwhile where you have two new numbers on, two new members on a board to at least, you know, talk about it. That's all. I think we should have that opportunity.
Mr. Wells?
I hear Roxanne as well. I just, I'm in agreement with Pat, like, going back to the march, both that Mr. Zulus refers to, my memory of this was that the existing committee, or vast majority of them, wished to buy into this or bring, you know, bring permanency to this and I would support that strongly. I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to stout over, especially for the work they've done so far. That's just my thought there, so.
Ms. Musto, back to you.
Thank you. I'm not saying to undo what's been done, Richard. I just wanted to look at that particular last section that was added in because that section four was not in the original one as well as the terms for how many years people are staying on committees. Because I feel like we don't have any consistency on, you know, like this is two-year terms or up to six years. There's different terms, that's all. So I think it would be worth at least looking at. And again, I'm not trying to undo anything except for this, at least let's look at that.
Okay. And Mrs. Zulus?
And absolutely, we can do that. Just with the caveat that those were direct recommendations from the committee for us to, those were the changes that they recommended and that we discussed with them in the meeting. I guess, I guess the question is regardless of how many we have to appoint based on how many, how many of the existing members are still interested, I still think it makes sense to publicize this, to see, to generate more interest, whether it be, whether it be just through the website and email blast or we do something with the Milton Times. I think it's important to publicize this as widely as possible so we can generate some interest in it.
Thank you for those contributions, one and all. Very, very helpful. Mike, helpful to you?
So have we agreed to publicize it? Or are we, is that what we're going to do?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells?
I'd be all right with publicizing it. I don't know to the point they're taking it out of the tires. But my bigger concern is I really think Mr. Milano, I mean, someone should, at least our page, someone check with the existing committee and see which members wish to remain. I really don't, I don't want to slight them. I mean, they stepped up and took on a task at a time when it was needed and I, I just don't want to, I mean, I don't know all of them, but for Pat especially, I've worked with that woman for over twenty-five years on these issues in this community. She's watching TV. Pat sent us something, sent a smoke signal, tell us you're interested. Like, I just, that's, I just want to, and for the continuity of the work they've done so far, you know, if we start with a brand-new committee from scratch, who knows what they might want to do. So that's, that's just my own thought. I just want to make sure that we do not slight any of existing members or the work that they've done. Other than that, as far as publicizing it, after that, I'm fine with it.
Do you want to have a motions to that effect of publicization?
I'll make a motion to publicize it, but I'll include in my, in the motion that we first check with the existing members, which members are expressed.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Second.
Second.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any further discussion? I have just two observations. I have just two observations. Sort of editorializing, well, in the third line where it reads advancing equity and justice for all with a focus on eradicating from the town of Milton. I thought based upon the context, there might be considered the word inequality.
Is that a friendly, is that a friendly amendment, Mr. Chair?
It is a friendly amendment.
I'll accept that.
And then in the following line where it says oppression, racism, injustice, and violence, I would suggest that it be changed to or, so that it doesn't have to be interpreted by anyone or misinterpreted by anyone as all of those, but any one of them.
I think Mrs. Zulus has a question. I'm accepting to it, Mr. Chair. I think Mrs. Zulus has a question.
So I, so I don't think there's a motion to, to change the charge on the floor. I think there's a motion about publicizing this. If we want to have a motion to change the charge, that I think would be different. And I think that's something that Roxanne wanted to look at, take some time to look at. So I, I, so my suggestion would be to go ahead and publicize, and then when we, when we're ready to, you know, have Roxanne take, and Erin take, take a look and perhaps make suggestions, maybe make those changes at that point.
That's certainly acceptable to me and consistent with what I intended. I just did not want to leave the topic about making those two observations. As a contribution to the question. So, we have a motion in a second.
I'm, I'm bringing my motion back to my initial, which is just a public.
Correct. Okay. So you know, further comment? We'll call Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes, but I just have a question. Does it specifically have to be on the agenda? I'm just looking at our agenda. Discussion of appointment. I guess my question is for the, so we're, I have no problem advertising it and so forth, but what about the terms of the appointment? Does that, is that included in this?
No, no.
So it's just to solicit people that might want to insert on it? Okay.
And, and I thought doing that would be consistent with the word process.
Just double checking.
Good, good to have that raised. Thank you. So Ms. Musto voted yes, and Mr. Doyle voted yes as well. Thank you. Very important discussion, good contributions. We move to agenda item number eight, discussion and update in the partnership with Curry College and the Community Service Work Study Program. We'll turn to Paige Appolito for that agenda item. Paige?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In late August, we partnered with Curry College to advertise students for their federal work-study community service program. And it is, they started back to school on August twenty-ninth. We had three departments, Council on Aging, the Cemetery, and Parks and Rec. Each department came up with a job description that we put forth to Curry College to get students to come and work. They work about five or ten hours a week. For, it has to be, you know, it was, the program is a direct service component, so it has to benefit the Milton residents. And each one of those departments come up with job descriptions that Curry College approved, and they are, they're now advertising with their students, and we will hopefully have those filled the work, you know, the academic year with the town. And next, I already have, next year I have library and the planning department on board. They just weren't able to get a job description together for this year. Questions?
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, once again, thank President Quigley. I've said this many times. He is clearly in his staff at Curry, clearly a partner in this community in so many ways, and I just want to thank them once again for engaging with this community to make the quality of life and the opportunities for people who live here as well as his students who attend there. Always better.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. I'd just like to add that once upon a time I served as a university financial aid administrator with the work-study program being a part of that program offices portfolio. And the benefits that are realized by the students involved, not only in terms of their financial benefits, but their growth and development and contributions to the community can never be underestimated. And we're very, very fortunate to have Curry College and Paige working together in collaboration to bring this asset to our town and our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We want to, I'd just like to suggest that we do a formal letter to President Quigley and express the gratitude of the select board if everybody's in agreement with that. I don't think we need a vote, but I can assess to move in that direction. Thank you all. Let's move to item number nine on our agenda. This is the discussion update, family zoning requirements of the Massachusetts Pay Transit Authority, MBTA communities, these are the MBTA communities executed by the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. The site was deferred from our August twenty-third meeting to this evening. And we have with us our Director of Planning and Community Development, Tim Zowinski. Welcome, Tim. And we turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and members of the Select Board for having me for this, this quick update. You, you may recall back in March, I did a, a pretty in-depth formal briefing of the Select Board on the draft guidelines that DHCD had put together for compliance with the, it's, it's new, it's, it's not that new anymore. It's from, from last year. The new section three A of chapter forty A, which is the Zoning Enabling Act, commonly referred to as the MBTA Communities zoning law. Just as a refresher, that, that law, it was part of a larger suite of housing, housing laws that were passed under an economic development bill in twenty-one, and basically require any, any community that's in the MBTA service area, and that's a defined term in, in forty A about, you know, what constitutes an MBTA community, is required to create a zoning district of a reasonable size where multifamily housing is allowed by right, and there are other kind of more specific requirement of the legislation. But it's, it's, it's very sparse legislation, and so DHCD was empowered to create guidelines for compliance. This board was briefed on those guidelines back in March. We put together a comment letter to DHCD expressing some of the concerns we had about some, some very sort of Milton-specific issues with those guidelines, and we submitted those along with a lot of other communities, a lot of, a lot of other advocacy groups, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. Over the course of the past year, DHCD has been working on final guidelines for compliance, which, which came out in the beginning of August, August tenth. They were issued by DHCD. And so I want to just take a, a little bit of time to kind of inform you about the changes between the draft guidelines and the final guidelines, what the implications of that, of those are for Milton, and kind of talk through what the next steps are, you know, for our compliance with this law. The, I, I guess I'll, I don't want to use the term good news, bad news, but the news is that there's really not a ton of news for Milton. A, a, pretty much everything that applied to, to us in the draft guidelines was not really affected by the changes that were made by the, in, in, in the final guidelines. And, and if, if, if you're interested in, in learning a little bit more about those changes, we can talk about that later. But, you know, they affect other towns that, the, the draft guidelines had kind of lumped some towns into, you know, tranches of MBTA service that really kind of, would have really kind of skewed their, their housing numbers in a way that, you know, I think they, they kind of thought better of. So if, if folks are interested, we can talk through some of those specific changes. But as it relates to the size of the district that Milton has to create and the zoned capacity that we need to enable, and what zone capacity means is basically, you know, in a district, you look at the parcels that you have, you look at the zoning requirements, you say, okay, in this geography, how many potential units of housing can be created? And that's the zone capacity under your by-ride zoning. And so we're still responsible for a zoned capacity of two thousand four hundred and sixty-one multifamily units. We are considered to be a rapid transit community by, by, by way of the, the Matapan Trolley, which connects to the Red Line. One of the, one of the issues that we raised in our comment letter, which I think was salient for a lot of communities, was, you know, the way that DHCD has been thinking about this, if you sort of draw a half-mile radius around a transit station, and your district has to be in that to be transit adjacent. And, and what we had said was, you know, our, our, our trolley line is up against the river, which is the border between us and City of Boston. So, you know, a significant fraction of that area is either in City of Boston, in the Napa River, or in DCR territory. And so, you know, how does that affect our ability to be able to squeeze a reasonably sized zoning district into that area? One of the calculations that went into the final guidelines was a calculation of, of what they call developable area within that half-mile radius. And what the ACB basically determined was, you know, for, for town of Milton, yes, in any given half-mile radius of any station, there's a limited area, you know, due to the location of that station, but because we've got a chain of four of them, plus a fifth one at Matapan Square, we have a significant enough amount of, of what they call developable area to be able to fit in a good-sized district. The minimum size of the district is fifty acres. We have something like, and I'll bring up the number right now, four hundred and four acres of what they consider to be developable area, which means it's not wetlands, it's not roadway, it's not DCR property, it's not the river. So, so we're still on the hook for, for, for having fifty percent of our zoning district within that half-mile radius of any one of the four stations. What that means is fifty percent of the district can be elsewhere, which means, you know, whether it's, whether it's East Milton or Granite Ave or the west side of town, anywhere in town, half of our district can be, can be there, but half of it needs to be in that sort of Matapan Trolley corridor. The two other changes to the, the, the guidelines that are, that are relevant, not only to Milton, but to every community is there's a question about affordability. The legislation is, is silent on affordability. It really is about, you know, production of market-rate housing. And a lot of towns, you know, especially towns that are system people forty B, you know, we're concerned about, you know, are we allowed to do inclusionary zoning? Are we allowed to have an affordability component in this zoning? And what the ACB basically said was yes, but in order to prevent towns from, I'll use the term weaponizing, inclusionary zoning to, to actually prevent multifamily housing, they, they put a cap on the percentage of units that could be affordable in one of these MBTA community compliant districts. So we can have up to ten percent of, of the units in this district be affordable, which would, which would keep us, you know, above, you know, our heads right at the water level of three B. But we can't do over ten percent. And those units have to be, if they're affordable, they have to be SHI compliant, all of the various income limits and, and everything like that would need to comply. And, and the other thing that, that kind of was, was clarifying in the, in the final guidelines was mixed use is allowed. So you could do something like requiring, you know, some type of, or, or having the option to produce mixed use with, with first-floor retail or second-floor office or whatever. The only, the only restriction there is that, that can be an option, but it can't be a requirement. So at the very fundamental level, you have to allow for strictly residential multifamily housing. And there can be an option to do mixed use. And the thinking behind that is again, the demand for commercial in a given sub-market may not be as strong as the demand for housing. And so again, if, if there are too many requirements for commercial use, then, you know, you may not actually get units produced, you know, under, under these guidelines. And so I, I, I think that the upshot of, of all of the updates is, is really DHCD kind of thinking really critically about how do we, how do we give towns the tools to have the maximum amount of flexibility to do something that works for their individual community while also ensuring that towns are producing zoning districts that have a reasonable expectation of, of units being built. So the, the, the next, the, the immediate next steps in, in sort of this process is there is a January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three deadline to produce what they call an action plan. And that is they produce the form. I've reviewed the form. It's really pretty easy. A lot of it is just informational about kind of the housing and zoning situation in your town. And really, the, the kind of the meat and potatoes of the action plan is, what is your plan to do community outreach? What is your plan to do, you know, the actual drafting of the zoning? What is your timeline for getting to town meeting? They want to make sure that towns are engaging in these activities and have something to hold towns accountable to, you know, for actually, you know, doing this in, in a timely way. So that's something that is, is, is really, you know, it's a January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three deadline. If we're able to produce that action plan and submit it in time for that deadline, we will be compliant, we'll be considered compliant with the law for twenty-twenty-three. You may recall that our compliance in twenty-twenty-two required a, a briefing of the Select Board, which we did in March, and then the submission of a really simple informational form. So we're all set for twenty-twenty-two. We can be all set for twenty-twenty-three with the submission of this, this relatively simple action plan. I currently have out a, a grant application through the Executive Office of, of Housing and Community Development for, for technical assistance funds to, to get a consultant to help us with the community outreach and the sort of the drafting strategy for this. So my department's prepared to, to fill out this action form. What, what I need, I guess, the Select Board is, you know, the thumbs up to go ahead, basically. This is something, you know, there are communities out there that are really wholeheartedly embracing this, this new law. There are others that, that are a little resistant, you know, to duping it. The thinking being that the penalties, you know, the, the loss of grant funding or the loss of eligibility for certain grant funding, including vast works, is, is sort of not commensurate with what they see as the impact of, of duping one of these opening districts. I don't want to go too far out over my skis in terms of, of kind of taking the next, you know, baby step in this process. So it would be, it would be great to have, you know, an affirmative kind of go-ahead to put this action plan together and to utilize, you know, hopefully we get the grant and, and have the ability to go out and get a consultant to help us with the drafting. What, what I'll say is that, you know, it's, it's the law, so, so there's that. I, I'm trying to focus on, on sort of the positive opportunity for the town of Milton here. There is a lot to, to be gained, I think, from doing this in a really good faith and, and kind of deliberate way. I think that looking at our land, land use regulations and using this MBTA communities legislation as a tool to kind of look at our, our zoning, you know, can have positive implications for, for tax revenue, positive implications for climate change resilience. And the next item on the agenda is discussion of the work that we're giving on that. I think it has the potential to have really positive implications for equity and affordability, which I think if, you know, if you reviewed the report of the Equity and Social Justice for All Company, which, which everyone obviously has, it's a really big part of their report, and I think that land use regulation has a really strong role to play in that. So I think it's, it's, it's a really positive opportunity if we embrace it and really try to do it right and figure out how it can work best for Milton. I do want to focus on, on those positive implications. But, but what I will say is, is, you know, in the discourse around this legislation, like I said, there are certain towns that are just sort of, you know, the juice isn't worth the squeeze on this, and, and, you know, we don't think that there's going to be compliance. And, and what I would caution about that attitude, and, and we haven't heard a lot of that here in Milton, which I think is very positive. I think people have been, you know, really trying to kind of I think people have been, you know, really trying to kind of, you know, figure out what the best way to do this is and and waiting for the final guidelines. But I think, you know, we just saw yesterday an election where, you know, barring, you know, unforeseen circumstances, I think we're going to have a new a new governor in in More Healy and a new Attorney General in Andrea Campbell, both of whom have have centered housing and affordability and housing justice as really significant parts of their platform. You know, and you know, we we've also had, you know, commentary from the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, which is a quasi-public agency that collaborated very closely with D C D on, you know, the production of these guidelines, basically coming out and saying, you know, be careful if you're out there and 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 considering, you know, noncompliance with this legislation. It's a statutory mandate, and the consequences of this is a quote from Clark Siegler, who's the Executive Director, "The consequences of noncompliance will ultimately extend beyond loss of a few state grants." It's a little bit of a kind of a wild card as to what any new administration is going to, what approach they're going to take towards noncompliance. But I think we really do need to make a good faith effort at this. Again, for those very positive reasons, you know, for the the opportunities for for growth and development in our community, but also, you know, to to stay on the right side of the law on 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 this. So that's my update. Happy to answer any more specific questions. And and I think coming out of this, you know, just either either the okay or or the commitment to further discussion of of the okay of of pursuing the submission of an action plan for for compliance.
Thank you, Tim, and I'd like to open the floor by recognizing our receipt today from the Affordable Inclusion Milton, a recommendation that we move ahead with drafting an action plan so that Milton can stay on schedule. Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
You're on mute, Richard. Okay. And thank you, Tim. And I just, you know, I've thought about this a lot. You know, 2,000 units in the town of Milton, particularly along, I mean, tell me where I'm wrong here, Tim, just I just, because I want to be very forthright here. I mean, you and I know that the stations are Milton, Valley, Cape and Matapan. Which one did I forget? Central Ave, Central Ave. And so you're talking that entire Elliott Street corridor as well as all the streets along Valley, Oak, Waldo, Columbine Road, Allen Circle, Cliff Road, Hinckley Road, Hawthorne, Brandon, Willoughby and Curtis. Am I correct? No?
That's that's about all of them, yeah.
Yeah, I did pretty good, huh? So, I mean, you you 2,000 units would really, I mean, we've, as you know, been dealing with the affordable, we have 700 units before us over the past five years I've been here, anyway. 2,000 units would, particularly in those neighborhoods, would clearly alter forever the layout and the appearance of and the quality of life of what those neighborhoods would become given to what they are today, correct? I mean, the only way to do this would be, so if I'm Developer Jones, and I want to develop, and I buy four houses on Valley Road, say, which is a dead end, which abuts the station. And then I buy those, because the only way to get it, it's almost exclusively, I mean, you tell me, it's, would you agree that it's 95% single-family homes?
Yeah, it's it's probably, I mean, there's there's a smattering of of two families in there. But I mean, we've all we've all driven up Elliott Street, we know, you know, what the what the look and feel.
Right, so.
There are apartment buildings.
Smattering with, I give it smattering, but I give it with a small s. So having all of two families home and this stuff, so that they are hard to find. I mean, 2,000 units would change, would almost force this community to have to go to like city former government. The impact on schools, public safety, public works, everything would just be, I mean, we we look at the pushback we get just on the on the affordable projects and and the affordable projects that have been presented to us. I mean, Blue Ave, Canton Ave, Rusher Road. I mean, you're talking historic pieces of this community and transforming them into, and I get it, I mean, I get that on a on a 40B. So now you're taking 40B and you're quadrupling. I just, I just, I don't know, I'm I'm concerned about, I mean, we've gotten two Mass Work grants in my life here. And one of them wasn't even for us, it went to Hold's Pond Improvements, which is really a D C I Mass Work grant. For those people who live in these neighborhoods, this is dramatically going to change their lot, the appearance of their neighborhoods. And and from a community perspective, no, well, look at overrides now, what will happen then? Just that's that's my concern, I just, this is dramatic, I'm, this is really big, so.
No, and and I don't think I I I don't think there's any denying, nothing that you said is is out of line or out of left field or or something that that everyone isn't really thinking of, and and it's totally, you know, absolutely valid. What it what it what I would say is, and and this is, you know, why I think it's important to 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 get the professional help from legal and zoning experts and and really kind of take a really close look at, you know, what would implementation actually look like? And one thing that I'll say is, there's there's sort of two things that I think we have going for us. One of one of which is that half of, you know, that zone capacity, when we say 2,400 units, if not a single unit gets built, we are still complying with the law. And I think one, you know, the 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 point of the law is to sort of loosen up regulations to encourage building. But I don't think anyone anticipates that, you know, there will be, you know, this flood of of hundreds of new new units on Elliott Street in in a single year or even a five-year period. I think there's an understanding, because again, this is a regional kind of law. There's going to be a lot of building going on everywhere. And so there there is an element of it being spread around. But on a on a sort of individual community level, you know, only half of that zone capacity needs to be in that sort of Elliott Street corridor. We can choose anywhere else in town that we might think is appropriate for, you know, so 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 there is an element of of being able to spread that around. And the reason the reason I say that is because, and and I raised this concern during my original briefing, you know, I raised the concern, you know, in in our comment letter. The the partialization that we have in the Elliott Street corridor is is really the original zoning that we had in town, 5,000 square foot lots, you know, with single families, sometimes two-family houses on it. So it it's really not an area where you think of, you know, oh, this would be a really appropriate area for for big apartment buildings. The the thing that we we have going for us is multifamily is defined as three units or more. So, you know, just the the sort of quick and dirty math on this area is, you know, if you allowed three units on a 5,000-foot lot, that's obviously a lot more than is currently zoned for or currently exists, but it's not another Hendry's building. You exceed 15 units per acre with that. And so that is a way to sort of create zoning that, you know, will obviously affect the density, will have obviously have impacts, but won't have those dramatic, really acute, you know, huge impacts that a bigger multifamily building would have. And quite frankly, we don't have, we don't have the parcels in this area for larger buildings. So if we wanted to rack up units on a larger parcel with sort of more traditional multifamily buildings, we would need to look elsewhere. You know, and again, you know, Granite Ave, East Milton, Randolph Ave, you know, Blue Hill Ave, Blue Hills Parkway, these are all, you know, the 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 town is, you know, it's wide open for half of that district. And so, you know, there's really, you you have a lot of latitude to create sub-districts that are kind of more appropriately geared to the partialization and the neighborhood character you have. But but again, you know, you're not wrong. It is dramatic, it's a lot of units. And and it's something that I think we need to kind of really like think deliberately about.
I'm thinking, thank you.
Oh, Arthur, you're on mute.
All right, we're going to reverse it. Ms. Musto, you're recognized and then Ms.
Well, I put my hand up, and Mike was before me.
Oh, that's okay.
All right.
These frames keep moving, and that's.
Well, I have a couple of concerns about the zoning. So I know, Tim, that you had mentioned that it's, you know, 2,400 units approximately, right? So it sounds like your thought is, oh, we that we should prepare for it. But my thought is, the flip side is that we, although it may not get built up, we have to anticipate that it would happen, meaning that if we have, if we go with this kind of M B Ts, M B T A zoning that allows for 2,400 units, for us to say that we'll put these zones in, we'll be compliant, and we sort of check the box, we can't assume that it's going to be that we're checking the box and nothing's going to get developed, meaning that we that that could get developed, right? I'm wondering, number one, what are other towns around us doing? So what are some of the towns in the suburbs doing that are affected? I'm sort of curious if you've had any conversations with any of the planners around the area to find out how they're handling it. And, you know, again, I'm I'm concerned about this because of how this will change these these areas and congest areas more than they already are. And I'm with Richard on this, it's it'll forever change these these areas of town. And even if you, you know, have the the housing down by Cape Inn and and Elliott Street and putting them elsewhere, it's still changing the character of the town. So I guess my question is first, have we talked to any of the other town planners near us to sort of get a sense what they're doing and how they're tackling this? And my second question is, if you get this kind of a technical assistance grant, what exactly will it do? And is it something that you have to go with? In terms of if you get the grant, does that mean you have to apply that you're going to do this? Or is it sort of more informational to see how this would happen?
So those are two good questions, so thank you. So I I I think a lot of towns are still kind of in in our stage of kind of digesting things and and having their own internal conversations. One thing that I will say is that, again, Mass Housing Partnership, you know, a partner in in helping D C D draft these guidelines, is holding a series of of informational webinars about how to achieve compliance. I think a lot of planners in the region are going to be involved in those conversations. And so I think that's going to be a kind of a clearinghouse for discussion among, you know, other towns about how they're approaching compliance. So I'll be, I I'm I'm signed up for all of them, I'll be at one tomorrow. And and I'll be continuing to reach out to other towns to kind of see, you know, what their approach has been. But I think, you know, my 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 instinct right now is that, you know, folks are still kind of huddling up and and trying to kind of digest, you know, the guidelines. As it relates to your second question, you know, about the technical assistance grant, ultimately, what we're talking about is adopting zoning. And we've done, we've done it 100 times before, it's town meeting. Town meeting has to adopt zoning. And then you back into that process of there's a planning board hearing, there is, you know, a community outreach process by which, you know, we we sort of reach out to to stakeholders who are impacted by the potential zoning. And, you know, in some cases, we have professional help to help us, you know, draft this. And so really, what what the technical assistance grant is, is really to sort of pay a consultant to come in, help us convene stakeholders and kind of, you know, take their input into account and and really do a lot of the technical work around, you know, all of the technical aspects of zoning, setback requirements, heights, floor error ratio, you know, all of those things. Ultimately, when 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 you say, you know, do you have to go along with it, or is it, it's up to town meeting, you know. And so if if we want to sort of put together zoning, you know, my 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 take here is that we need as much help as we can get, and we need as much professional guidance as we can get. Because what I'll what what I'll say is, is that there's going to be an article at town meeting, whether the planning board puts it forward, or the select board puts it forward, or 10 residents in town who care about this issue put it forward. There's going to be a town meeting article. I I suspect that there are at least 10 residents that that want to see this, you know, go forward. And so, you know, my 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 take here and my sort of, my my kind of advice is we should take it seriously, we should get the help that we need, and we should try to put together, you know, the most comprehensive and thoughtful article that we can, rather than having town meeting deal with potentially a citizen's petition article that the department, the planning board, the select board have very little control or or input in. So hopefully, hopefully that answers your question. It's up to town meeting to to take or leave whatever we come up with.
Ms. Musto, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I'm just wondering, Tim, are you discussing this with the planning board in terms of how an article, if they do that, would come through? Or or what's the process, I guess?
Yeah, so I I I've given the planning board a similar briefing to the one I I gave tonight with the the guidelines came out, and we had a planning board meeting like the next day. So I was able to kind of give a really sort of immediate briefing to them. They will be, they will be involved, you know, it is ultimately, it's zoning. And so one way or the other, it's going to go through the planning board. You know, but 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 again, like I said, you know, as we go through this process of of discussing, you know, what the best way to do this is, I can't speak for the planning board, I don't know if they're going to say thumbs up, let's do it, or we don't want to do it. But I but I guess my my characterization to tonight is that one way or the other, whether it's the planning board or the select board or a group of residents, we should be getting ahead of of putting language together and and doing the analysis and 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 really sort of drilling down into into, you know, community outreach and 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 really a smart strategy for this. So, you know, the planning board doesn't yet have a standing item on their agenda on this, although I suspect they might, you know, because it is a big issue, and 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 they're going to be involved as much as they they think it's appropriate to be involved. Because I think, you know, ultimately, it's 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 probably the best course of action for the planning board to handle zoning articles. And so, you know, there's they're kind of doing, you know, what we're doing tonight and and kind of mulling these things over, reviewing the guidelines. I anticipate there'll be a future agenda item where they start to strategize about what their what their position and what their their tactics are going to be.
Thank you, Ms. Zulas.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it strikes me that we're not at that point yet, at the zoning point. What the point we're at here is preparing a draft action plan to comply with the statute. And our planning director has come to us for direction on whether to prepare a draft action plan for us to see what this would look like and to 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 determine whether it would be submitted by January 31st. And so it seems to me that it's appropriate for us for us to do that. So I'm going to make a motion to direct the planning director to to draft a, prepare a draft action plan pursuant to Chapter 40A, Section 3A.
Thank you, Ms. Zulas. Boxian?
I just had a quick question I wanted to ask Tim before we do that, if that's possible. Tim, so how long would it take if we decided to go with the technical assistance grant? And how long would it, like, once, like, if one was approved, how long would that take? And when are these meetings with other town planners that you're talking about?
So so the the specific kind of seminars with with the Mass Housing Partnership, I I I think are happening bi-weekly, starting tomorrow. And then they're sort of topic-based about, you know, different aspects of zoning and different aspects of compliance. So tho- those are happening, you know, tho- those are happening starting tomorrow. And and I think there's nine of them scheduled over the next few weeks. In terms of, you know, by outreach and correspondence with other other town planners, that's more informal. So it's something that I I've started to kind of poke around a little bit. If I I I'm certainly definitely interested in in what other towns are are kind of thinking. So I will, I can I can absolutely kind of ramp up those discussions and and outreach, kind of see, you know, what what other what other towns are strategizing about. In terms of the 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 sort of the timeline of, you know, utilizing the the technical assistance and and kind of, you know, doing the the drafting of the zoning, the the deadline for comply, so I I said the action plan is necessary for compliance in 2023. The deadline for for future definite compliance is is the end of the year 2023. So effectively, we need to have a zoning passed that is compliant by December 31st, 2023. So effectively, by fall town meeting of 2023, if we we decide to have one. So, you know, my 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 goal would be to kind of follow that and and sort of back into a schedule of, again, community outreach, drafting, again, community outreach, drafting, readings at the planning board, you know, readings at the select board, if the select board's interested in being involved at that point. You know, to, to effectively prepare an article for a fall town meeting in twenty-twenty-three. Now, what I'll say is, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three rolls around and we don't have a, a, a zoning district approved, you know, the town doesn't turn into a pumpkin. It just means that we're not compliant. We can't, you know, apply for, for Mass Works or other grants. You know, like I said, I don't know what the new administration is going to do, you know, in terms of pursuing other means of, of compliance at that point. But I think, you know, again, if, if we're showing a good faith effort of, you know, trying to put something together and it just doesn't happen, you know, by a fall town meeting in twenty-twenty-three. You know, I, I don't think it's the end of the world, but I think the demonstration of progress is going to be something that, that's important. The specific answer to the question is, I'm trying to back into a timeline that gets us to a fall town meeting. And so, you know, a lot of that work would, would probably wind up happening, you know, in the sort of the winter, spring, early summer, you know, to get an article prepared.
Mr. Musto?
So I guess my thought process would be knowing those dates. Would it be possible that we don't vote this today? We put it on maybe for our next meeting or the subsequent meeting, once Tim has a little bit more time to find out a little bit more about what some of these other communities are doing, just to get a sense. It sounds like we're talking about deadlines in twenty-twenty-three. I know we need time to do this, but I don't, I mean, I don't see it on, as a, on our agenda that we're voting on this. And, you know, now, I just want to have time to sort of think about it a little bit as well and get, you know, have Tim get a little bit more information from some of the surrounding communities. You know, maybe there's some creative ideas out there. Thank you. And I know you're going to a lot of these meetings, Tim, you said, bi-weekly, it sounds like. So, I mean, and, you know, another two weeks, for instance, you'll probably have more information. That would be my suggestion. Thank you to consider.
Motion on the floor for Mr. Zulus. Mr. Zulus, would it be acceptable to you to move to the September twentieth meeting? Or would there be a problem with that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we've had a request from a department head to, to get some direction. And I think we, we owe it to the department head to give him some direction. We're talking about directing him to prepare a draft, not submit anything, but to prepare a draft and to begin the process of preparing a draft. So it seems to me that there's certainly no harm in, in, in going down that route and that it's, it's a route we should go down because January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three is going to come up very soon. And if Tim wants to, is planning this, so he wants to get started on a draft, seems to me two weeks could be very important. So I'm going to, I'm going to continue with my motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus and Mr. Musto.
Yes, I understand that. I just was wondering though, Tim, you know, is two weeks going to make a huge difference on this process? It seems to me that, you know, I would, I really would like to know what some of these other communities are doing and how they're tackling it. It sounded to me initially too, that a lot of these mass grants that communities received, there's only a handful that were receiving them and Milton really wasn't receiving them. So that's why I want to see what these other communities are doing. Some, and the other thing is, is there a possibility that they may even give extensions past these dates? We don't know that, but we should be prepared for the dates that they've set forward. I understand that. And, Mr. Zulus, I don't, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have, you know, go for this grant and doesn't mean that we're obligated by it by any means. I understand that. I'm just trying to get a sense of what some of the other communities are doing. And, and I'm just wondering if two weeks makes a big deal on that, that's all.
Mrs. Zulus?
You know, Tim can certainly come back and report to us what he learns during those two weeks, but that doesn't, that doesn't stymie him from, from beginning the process that he has asked us to begin here. And so, so it seems to me that there's certainly no harm and it could be very helpful to our department head if we, if we accede to the request.
So, Mr. Zulus, would you repeat your motion so that everybody clearly understands it in the context of this discussion place?
Sure, it's a motion to direct the planning director to move ahead to, to prepare a draft action plan pursuant to chapter forty-eight, section three A.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. And I have a question for Mr. Zawinski. The technical assistance is what you're going to be seeking to support the work of that draft, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. That, that was, we, we submitted a, a grant application for that back in early August, again, anticipating that, you know, the, the D H C D through, through a lot of their kind of grant programs is, is prioritizing support to communities to draft F E T A community zoning. So we wanted to make sure that we were in the mix, you know, for that. So that is something that, the, the mechanism for that would be, you know, if, if, and, if and when we, we get the grant and we're crossing our fingers, we think we have a good application. You know, we would use that funding to procure a consultant, you know, that, that would be able to help us, you know, draft zoning with, with, you know, community outreach and, and kind of technical analysis of zoning. And so, you know, it was, we, we wanted to be in the round to be considered because if, if, you know, January rolls around and, and, you know, we don't have that, then we're kind of, we're kind of on our own, either using our own budgetary resources or we're kind of going it alone, you know, with just kind of the department resources to track this zoning. So that's, that's not connected to the action plan submission. The action plan submission is, is, is really kind of an interim step to, to maintain interim compliance with the law. Because the, the actual deadline for the zoning isn't until the end of twenty-twenty-three. They try to set these milestones, the action plan is one of them. They're trying, they're trying to make sure we, they hold towns accountable for, for making progress.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to Mr. Zulus's motion, i- if, if this would have passed and if Tim were to do this, this would mean that we support this, correct, Tim? You'd, you'd be, you'd be making the application based on the fact that the select board supports this, correct?
I, I, I don't.
I don't know how you write it without.
I wouldn't, I, I, you know, I, I can't. If you, if you support it or don't support, I, I, I think really what, what, what the submission of the action plan is, is just taking a step in a process. Because I think ultimately, again, what all of this is about is passing or not passing zoning. And, and I think, you know, once that zoning is drafted, the select board will have an opportunity to, to be a part of that process, to support it or not support it. I, I, I think that, you know, I, I would not foreclose the possibility that we're able to put together zoning that is acceptable to, to, to every, well, not everybody, but broadly acceptable. You know, and, and so I think the submitting the action plan is, is really just kind of, I, I don't think, I, I wouldn't go and wave that around as, you know, the select board supports MBTA community zoning. Because quite frankly, we haven't written anything yet. And so it, it's kind of a gating issue of getting to the point where we can get a process of, of writing zoning together and, and really collaborating on something that we all think can, can help the town. So I, I wouldn't, you know, if, I, I wouldn't interpret it as, as kind of any kind of explicit, you know, expression of support, because there's really not anything to support right now.
The, the motion that's on the floor is to support a draft. The draft is not a commitment to go forward with the action plan.
Mr. Chair, I have a follow up to my que, I didn't, that was part one of my question, so I just.
Okay, I'll go back. I, I just, Tim could.
Go ahead, go ahead. Tim, you can answer and then I'll continue.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think if, if that's the way that the board wants to proceed, I mean, I, I, I was intending, again, you know, to, to put together a draft of this plan and, and bring it back to you all, you know, at, at, at the earliest convenience so that, so that, you know, you can have a kind of a, a, a more detailed series of discussions about, you know, whether or not, you know, you want to submit it. You know, so I really think kind of breaking it up into those steps of just, you know, I think putting it together is, 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 is a, as a half kind of step. And then the full step is, do we want to submit it to D H C D or do we not want to submit?
It's a very helpful clarification. Back to you, Mr. Wells.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Tim. And, Tim, this is just my final point. Like, look, you know me as far as trying to support the employees and everything they do. And I know how hard you work for this community. But as we sit here and talk and as, as the work from your office and so many other committees in this community is that as we sit here and talk tonight, there are individuals who look at this through a different lens. It's going to be a lens of profit. You know, we, this, this is going to be an opportunity for certain developers to be able to come and do this. I think for all of us who are on this board and for my colleagues who are no longer on this board, I think when we saw one developer come in and buy up four significant parcels in this community without anyone knowing anything about it, I think would be ignorant of us to think that that won't happen again and that those attempts to do that won't happen again. And that's, brings me back to my previous comments about, I think you'd be very vocal about that people need to do this instead of, I mean, we are, we see what happens with every project, every, you know, Tim, you go to the planning board, you go to the Z B A's, you know, you know what it's like, it's just, and this is going to be at by, and, and I think that I want it to be on the record that people know that there will be developers sitting there tonight using, looking at this legislation as like, yep, this is a way for me to make, don't worry me, and I get that. But, so to that point, and I will second Mr., if that's what we knew, I'll second Mr. Zulus's motion, Mr. Chair.
The motion is made and seconded, Mr. Zulus, you are recognized, and then Mr. Musto.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make clear, and I think now it's clear, the motion is not to, to approve the action plan or submit the action plan, it's to begin to prepare. And, and it, it seems to me that part of the problem that Richard alluded to was for many years, this, this community did not prepare affordable housing. It did not manage affordable housing. And then that left us at the will of forty-two developers. So, so when we have an opportunity here at the, at the behest of our planning director to begin to prepare something that we subsequently can approve and submit, I think it's a good idea to do so and we shouldn't lose any time in doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Musto? You're on mute, Roxanne? That's okay. You've always been my bad example.
I wanted to thank Tim for clarifying a few things there and for also, Mr. Zulus, explaining how this would be just preparing something, but not necessarily that we're voting because I think that needs more discussion. So clearly, I think that's fine and I would support that. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Musto, and I'd just like to close the discussion by adding that my professional training and strategic planning suggests that the more information that you have, it's close to total information you have, the better your decision-making is going to be and the better people upon whom you rely or who you serve can be informed to make their input as well. Also, I'd just like to add that if we're going to be going out for technical assistance, we aren't going to be going out alone and there's going to be competition for that. And we want to have the opportunity to get the right technical assistance for the draft. So with that said, we have a motion from Mr. Zulus, it's seconded by Mr. Wells. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now he is, we'll call both Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Zawinski. We go on now to item number ten on the agenda. Discussion briefing Commonwealth of Massachusetts fossil fuel ban demonstration program by Milton's Office of Planning and Community Development and the Department of Public Works Environmental Coordinator. I know we have Mira with us. Oh, we did, is she going to be joining you, Tim?
She is.
Okay, and is Josh twenty also?
No, I'm, I'm filling in for Josh. He has class right now. So, but I, I, I want to just sort of start off by saying that Josh and Mira are really the stars of, of this show. So I'm going to kind of lead off with, with a few kind of introductory things and, and Mira is going to do a lot of the heavy lifting. The, the specific agenda item here is, is, is a discussion of the, the Commonwealth's fossil fuel ban demonstration program. We, we are kind of going to sneak in a, a broader kind of briefing on all of the climate change and, and green building work that both my department and the engineering department through Mira, the environmental coordinator, have been working on. So appreciate the, the indulgence on that. So just, I, I've got some, some bullet points that, that Josh prepared and, and Mira's got. Mira, do you have, do you have a slideshow that runs through all this? So if, Mira, if you can share your screen.
You're welcome, Mira. It's great to have you with us again.
Is that the first slide, Mira?
I think that's not, the one I have is starting with sustainability summary or... Yes, there you go.
Okay, so, so, so here's, here's a kind of a rundown of, of the work that, that, that we've been doing. Like I said, like a collaboration between planning and the engineering department. Josh and Mira have, have really been the driving forces here. I have, I hopefully effectively managed Josh's, his work and that's my contribution. But starting off with the Building Electrification Accelerator. So this is a, a coalition of around thirty municipalities that are interested in decarbonization efforts, including the ten municipalities that were really the driving force behind this fossil fuel ban demonstration project. Just by way of background, this was the, the recent climate bill that was passed enabled a, a pilot program for up to ten communities to, that are interested in banning fossil fuel connections in, in new development to, to pass laws that, that would, that would effectively that. There are already ten communities that have submitted home rule petitions to the legislature to allow them to, to pass laws that ban fossil fuels. The Building Electrification Accelerator is, is led by two individuals that were instrumental in town of Brookline and town of Arlington's, you know, efforts in, in this regard. And, and basically what this accelerator is, is just a group of communities kind of providing support and resources to each other who are interested in, in sort of writing their own home rule petitions to potentially be a part of this program. So we have been attending those meetings just to kind of be in the loop on, 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 on this. There's been a little bit of interest from certain members of the select board, certain members of the community on, you know, what is the possibility of Milton kind of being able to be one of these communities to potentially ban new fossil fuel hookups. So we've been, we've been in the loop on that, utilizing the resources that it provided that group. One thing that I'll say is it, it, it's, it's an uphill climb for town of Milton. These ten other communities have, have a real head start on us. The legislation allowing this program was kind of tailored to, to their efforts. You may have seen recently City of Boston, which is not one of the original ten communities, kind of muscled in and, and wants to be one of them. But a couple of the things that are in the legislation that I think are going to have to, we're going to have to contend with are you have to be, be compliant. So that's either safe harbor through ten percent, safe harbor through the one and a half percent land count, temporary safe harbor through a housing production plan, which we have currently, but, but won't have in, in about a year and a half. So I'm, I'm actually, I, I'd like a little clarification on how that's going to work. And then there are a, a number of really kind of detailed reporting and analysis requirements that we currently don't have. You know, we're in the process of trying to figure out how to, how to get, you know, some of those resources to do the, the data collection that would be, that would be necessary. So, you know, we can, we can continue to, to, to look into, you know, the possibility of this. We're going to continue to participate in the accelerator program because again, it's, you know, periodic meetings between, you know, some of these communities that, you know, even if we aren't able to pursue a home rule petition to be, to be one of these ten communities, I think it's still a good resource for us to sort of learn some of the tips and tricks that other communities are doing. I didn't even read the slide there. So hopefully that's, that's all there. Mira, you can go on to Soul Smart designation. So Soul Smart is a, you, you can see a Department of Energy program that provides technical assistance. to, to reduce barriers to solar development. You know, we want to have solar as a renewable energy source. I think that's something that we've been very interested in and really proactive in, you know, through the Green Communities Program. And, you know, all the credit in the universe goes to Bill Ritchie, the Director of Consolidated Facilities, who's been, you know, really a winter soldier on this stuff in terms of getting us green communities grants and getting us these, these solar arrays over the course of the years. Soul Smart is gonna be a part of sort of Green Communities 2.0, which is an update to the Green Communities Program that the State Department of Energy is, is currently putting together. So we are in the process of working with Consolidated Facilities and the Building Department to get towards Soul Smart designation in there. If you're familiar with the LEED program, for instance, which is for green building certification, it's kind of similar to that where there are different categories of of things that you need to do to get different certifications. So, Mira, are we looking at gold designation or silver?
So we did talk to Joe Prondek, and he mentioned that the one part that you have to get to gold with is a three-day turnaround. And he mentioned that with his staffing, it's really not possible to have a three-day turnaround. So we're looking at silver mostly.
Yeah, so, so we're actually in, in, with, with the regulations we have and with, you know, the, the policies that we have in place, we're actually in, in pretty good shape, you know, for silver designation, which is pretty good. And, and, you know, to, to what Mira just said, it, it's a really ambitious turnaround for permitting solar projects for three days. Maybe, maybe we'll get there, but I think we're still in good shape for, for silver designation. And again, that's gonna be really important for our continued status as a green community. You know, just one thing I'll say about green communities is Milton has really embraced that program in a very big way. I think it's, it's a real feather in our cap. They, they recently, it was a year, a year and a half ago, you know, created new green communities guidelines, created a whole new category of town. We're actually not allowed to get as much money as we've gotten in the past green communities, because we've been so successful in getting green communities grants and, and using that program. And so they've kind of said, you know, Milton saves some cash for the other towns, which, you know, is, is not the greatest, but it also, I think, is a reflection of our, our real great embrace of that program. And so we want to make sure that we're in the mix for, for the, the, any new regulations that come out in that. So, Mira, do you want to go? I, I, I think your slideshow kind of goes into some of your, your items here. So you can go ahead and take the lead here.
Just to give him due credit, Josh and I have been working on all of this. So some of these is, a lot of this is also him. And I also thanked him for taking over for him. So this is a Winter Valley Solar Project, and after the MVP grant, which, again, kindly the select board gave us funding for, but was not, at the end of the day, successful. But Winter Valley reached out actually afterwards for, and they had an interest in a larger scale solar project throughout their community, especially to lower electricity costs. So Josh and I met with the Activities Director, Liz O'Rourke, Tuesday. And we started talking about how this could be a really good opportunity for different types of solar development. And it could actually be a microgrid network with the Winter Valley. MAPC's Accelerating Climate Resiliency Grant has funded something like this in the past in Chelsea and could be a potential funder for this. And so right now, we're pursuing the initial requirements and seeing if it's applicable, and we're looking at an expression of interest, which would help us see if this is again, applicable. This is mostly on my side. It's the solid waste portion of environmentalism essentially. So we're looking at a residential organic program. We looked into a couple of different vendors, and then we looked into a municipal program, but it ended up being that the best solution would be to do a black earth preferred vendor system. So for this, the town would be essentially just promoting black earth to residents. And then after we reach 300 subscriptions, all the residents have a 30% reduction in price. And right now, the price is about $18 per month, so it would drop to $1,250. Then we, I'm starting a PSA program for Milton Access TV and for the yearly grant to fund a lot of our solid waste program, including ordering new carts. I'm trying to explain concepts like produce, reuse, recycle in order to get more points for that grant. And so the, this first video was just kind of showing textile disposal. I don't know why I can't move forward. But it was just talking about textile disposal and where the bins are. I'm hoping in the future to work with Glover Elementary, actually, to include students in some of the videos so that it's educational for them as well. And, you know, parents might want to watch their kids doing stuff like this instead of me. The other thing is that some of you may know that Milton has been in the MS4 program, the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit, for about 20 years. And this is just to keep storm water clean and free of pollutants and sewage, as well as prevent a lot of flooding. This year, we conducted a review of zoning codes and regulations to see just how feasible it is to incorporate green infrastructure in our subdivisions and zoning codes. The conclusion is it wasn't entirely friendly to natural ways of cleaning and dispersing storm water, and there are definitely ways we can improve. The engineering department is actually trying to incorporate these vest management practices into our road improvement projects so that it's more of a first nature instead of a second thought. So this would be a long-term project of making Milton a little bit greener and using these creative and environmentally friendly ways of dealing with the flooding and pollutants. This is a, a little bit of a mishmash of our climate efforts, including the greenhouse gas inventory, the, the air quality sensor grant, and the climate town meeting article. The greenhouse gas inventory, when we came and talked to you about the MVP program, we also requested $25,000 to do a greenhouse gas inventory of Milton and find out what our footprint was. Since it didn't go through, we did talk to the same contractors and consultants and ask them if they would still be willing to do that greenhouse gas inventory, even if we didn't have the whole program, which they said they would. And so originally, we had used the ARPA funding. Now we're trying to get funding from other sources. We looked into the Copeland Foundation, so are requesting their support and are also looking into other ways of doing that. Then the Mass DEP had a grant for the air quality sensors. So Purple Air is a real-time quality map that has a presence, as you can see, all over the world. And it mostly monitors regular weather data, like humidity, temperature, dew point. But it specifically monitors, monitors particulate matter 2.5, which is important because dust and PM 2.5 cause irritation in the respiratory tract, and it can worsen existing health conditions and reduce lung function, especially in vulnerable populations, which Milton does have. So this comes from exhausts, as well as burning fossil fuels and wildfires, essentially most things that do burn. And as you can see, there's already a lot on the West Coast. Milton seems to be pretty good, and we have them set up right now at three sensors, including the DPW yard and two in the select board members area. So thank you, Roxanne and Arthur, for letting us put that on your houses. We're doing the other two on Town Hall, which I will be working with Bill Ritchie on, and one at the Tucker School. So, so far, as you can see, our PM 2.5 levels are very low, but it's good to monitor it throughout this year with the program. And now I will request Tim to come back and do the climate declaration town meeting article.
So, so this is the final thing, and it's, it's a little bit of a preview of coming attractions, you know, for the select board. If you're familiar with this, our resident group, Sustainable Milton, who have been really great partners for a lot of the work that we've been doing, and we've tried to provide them with some informational and staff support for some of their efforts. They, they've expressed an interest in submitting an article to town meeting acknowledging a declaration of a climate emergency. As you see on the slide, 23 different towns in the Commonwealth have declared a climate emergency. And it's really, you know, on a, on a sort of symbolic level, a sort of a recognition of severity of, of, of the climate crisis, the town's commitment to, to, you know, put together efforts to, to do its part to, to help it. And, and then also some specific, specific measures that, that the proponents would want the town to take, you know, in, in, including, you know, a convening of stakeholders, you know, to put together a plan for putting together a climate action plan. So this is something that, again, you know, Josh and Mira have been, you know, meeting with Sustainable Milton and sort of discussing this with them. We've been really, you know, less, you know, kind of direct support in terms of, you know, technical assistance and more kind of helping them figure out, okay, what, what is the process to get to town meeting? And so what we've encouraged them to do is to reach out to, to the select board to see if they get some time on your agenda to, to do their own kind of advocacy for this, you know, for this town meeting article, you know, with the goal of it being adopted by the select board as a select board article rather than, you know, a petition. So, you know, that's something that may not be, be on your docket in the near future. And, and again, you know, we are, are very, you know, happy to provide the select board with any advice, support, or anything about, about, you know, what they hear from this resident group, and, you know, really try to, you know, engage with them and, and figure out what, what the best strategy, you know, for the select board is, you know, relative to this issue. So, you know, that may be something that might be coming down the pipe pretty soon, you know, from them. They're, they're a great group. They're passionate about this issue. And I think they've really, you know, they've, they've purged us to take a lot of these measures. And, you know, what we wanted to do, you know, in this presentation tonight, which is, which is over as soon as I'm done talking, is to just make sure that you're aware of the variety of different activities that these two departments are, are engaging in. This is a really important issue for, for us, for the town, for the region, for the world, for the, for everybody. And so we want to make sure that you all know that we're working on this and, you know, want to take any, any additional guidance for any other efforts that you think would be appropriate for us to take. And I'll finally just say again, Josh and Mira have really gone above and beyond on a lot of these efforts. They're, they're really great additions to, to staff in town. They've really been doing a great job, and I think they're doing work that you all could be, could be proud of. So we'll stop there and happy to take any questions. And Mira, if you want to stop the screen share, you can go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Tim and Mira. Very comprehensive. Maybe I can lead out with a question that's all right with my colleagues, and that is to know if Sustainable Milton, who we want to recognize as well, has the calendar for the December warrant, so that if they're going to move for that particular town meeting, they would have all of the timelines associated with the preparation of that nautical.
Yep, we've, we've, we've provided them with that, but we'll, we'll also, you know, follow up to make sure that that calendar is, is 100% clear. It's October 12th. Yep. So we'll, we'll make sure we, we pass that along to them.
Thank you very much. The floor is open, please. Questions, comments? Mr. Zulus, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so Milton's participation in green communities over many years has led to great benefits. It has saved us money and has allowed us to save money in an environmentally positive way. So to the extent that we can continue to do that with the Soul Smart program, it seems to me that makes a lot of sense. One question along those lines, Tim, in the, in the, or maybe Mira, in the chart that you showed, it said planning and zoning, and it said we had a five, and there was, it was in a pink box, and it said required 20. Is that something that's holding us back? Is it gating item? If, if so, what is the gating item on that? Was I clear in what I was referencing? It's on, on the slide, the Soul Smart slide.
Yeah, so actually, our permitting inspection is doing great. Obviously, we had a 55 for that. But actually, we codified wind instead of solar into our zoning bylaws to comply with the green communities requirements originally. So we didn't necessarily focus on wind and/or solar instead of wind. So that's kind of what's holding us up in that situation.
So, so we would have to, we would have to have a town meeting article on that in order to participate in the Soul Smart Plan?
Yes.
Smart program?
Well, we would need that for a higher rating. That's mostly why we're not getting the gold, I believe. But we would, seeing all the other things, we would probably have, we would end up having silver.
Okay.
My understanding is that you have to get a certain point total, and it doesn't, it's not as important as where all the, so if we rack up points in one area and we're deficient in another area, it evens out and we get to pass that level. But, but again, you know, it may, it may make sense for us to think about, you know, coming up with some solar zoning. I know that's something that the previous town administrator was, was very, we're, we're all familiar with how, how excited Mike was about renewables, you know. And so that may be something that we maybe want to consider, you know, not just to get the points, but obviously, you know, because it, it makes sense, you know, for the town.
Mr. Zulus?
And, and just one, one other, one other question. On the town meeting article that was referenced in the, I guess, the penultimate slide, it said Sustainable Milton is, is pushing an article, and, and is that an article to declare? Whoa. Is that an article to declare a, a, a climate emergency? And, 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 and/or, and is it, is, is it an article to, to establish this Energy and Climate Committee, which seems to me the select board could do without town meeting, but, you know, town meeting may want to do it too. So just what's the thought on the, on the, the article?
Both. It's, it's there, we're considering, we as in Sustainable Milton is considering the, putting them all together, which has been done in a lot of other communities as well, as developing a climate emergency or as declaring a climate emergency. This is one of the requests.
And then establishing the committee through town meeting rather than just establishing it through the select board?
Essentially, yeah, doing all of it at once.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Tim and Mira, we thank you very much for all of your contributions to this evening's meeting. Great to have you with us.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Night. Thanks.
We turn it this time to Agenda Item Number 11, Discussion Approval Lease Agreement Between the First Congregational Church in the town of Milton, Massachusetts for the Milton Teen Center, Wildcat Den. Paige, can we turn to you for the opening introduction on this topic? Can you, you've been, have you any?
Oh, I, well, I wasn't sure. You just want to know that we have actually hired someone for the teen center, and they're planning on opening on the 19th. So hopefully Mac Capwell will start on the 15th. And I know that, I believe you have the lease in front of you tonight to go over.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a brief background on the lease. This is the identical lease that was signed three years ago, except for the numbers and the dates. Three years ago, we signed a three-year lease to be able to use the, the renovated space in the basement of First Congregational Church as a youth center, Monday through Thursday from two to six for, for middle school students, and occasionally in Friday and Saturday evenings during, during hours agreed to by the Parks Department and by the, by the church for use of, for use by high school age children. And our cost to use the space, which was newly renovated, was just basically the costs to operate, which they determined at the time to be $340 a month during school, school months, so basically nine months. At that time, there was a 5% escalator for the second and third year of the lease. And so what the church has come back with now, they've come back and said, well, you know, because costs have increased, we'd like to have the, the costs be $394 a month rather than $340 a month, because that's a 5% increase for the last three years. Just as a note, we haven't been paying while it hasn't been open. The youth center was closed, was opened in January of 2020 and then closed in March of 2020. And so I think there's a lot of excitement about getting it open again. And I think the First Congregational Church has been very cooperative, and they're very excited, the Parks Department's very excited to get it open. And as I said, this lease, it's, it's a three-year lease as it was before, with the only change being, I, I believe from what Paige said, the being, I believe from what Paige said, the agreed-to date is probably September 19th on the first page, and then the $390 a month during the school year with a 5% escalator for the second and third years of the lease.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the lease as written.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Is there a second, please, to Mr. Wells' motion? Thank you, Ms. Musto. It has been moved and seconded. Seeing no hands, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Move to item number 12, discussion update to youth task force charge and appointment process. Mr. Zulus, did you want to speak to this item?
I would, Mr. Chair, if he does not.
Do you want to go ahead, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Michael. The, this task force was something that started when I finally was his chief, as Anne Marie might remember, and something that I articulated very strongly both when I, when I did run for select board and after I joined. The role of the task force was to do exactly what we've done, to identify and staff a youth center for the community. As our colleague Roxanne points out, and I, as each day goes along, I agree and agree more that, you know, we have so many committees, I'm not so sure we need this task force anymore. I've talked to Kevin and Paul, we have some highly skilled people in this community that are going to run it, you're going to have a director. I think this is a case where I don't think we need to point this committee anymore. You know me, that I'm like, let our operational people do their operational thing, we have some great people in this community, so let them run with it.
Any other comments, Mr. Zulus?
Sure, thank you. So, so, so yes, this was the committee that we put together, just about, I guess it was just about four years ago. There've been some suggestions, suggested changes by Margaret Carrolls from the Milton Coalition, basically changing, updating the names to it. The committee was very successful, was really responsible for getting the youth center open, explored options for a, an independent building for youth center, and did not move forward at that time, thinking that this was a better, more cost-efficient option for it. I think the youth task force was a great benefit then and can be a great benefit now for the purpose of getting the people in the room, including the students. We had student participation on the youth task force prior to opening the youth center. I think student participation going forward, along with the adults in the room, can be very beneficial for making suggestions and recommendations for programming and looking at opportunities for other resources for, for our teens to socialize and to be productive. And so I think it was very successful prior to the pandemic. I think it can be very successful again, particularly to be a platform and a voice for the teens to, to have some input in a very constructive and deliberative way. So I, I think it's very beneficial. Certainly, Ms. Carrolls from the Milton Coalition thinks it's very beneficial. You know, I can tell you from serving on it before the pandemic, it was a very, very good platform for getting, getting the teens' voice manifested in town government, and I think it could be again and should be again. So I, I think we should move forward with it. Successful before, I think it can be very successful again.
We thank you, Ms. Zulus, and you, Mr. Wells, for your comments, and we turn to Ms. Musto for hers.
Okay, thank you. As Richard said, we have so many committees. We have over 90 committees. Committees require the town clerk to do the swearing-in and hold, and paperwork, and it really, we can't farm everything out to committees. There are so many committees, it's hard to keep track of them. Even ourselves, when we were looking at the committees, we found pages upon pages of back pages of committees. This committee definitely was very successful. We do have a place now for the teens, which I think is awesome. They've done a great job. I don't think that at this point in time that we need to rush to do this committee when we're in the process of looking at all of the committees. I think it's a little short-sighted to do it right now. We're looking at all the committees, and I think that, you know, as, as was pointed out by Mr. Wells, there are, you know, we have the Parks Department that's doing a great job with this. We have, there's a director now for the Wildcat Den. I'm just thinking that we need to table this for now. We're in the process of looking at committees. If we keep adding, you know, adding committees, leaving committees, we're never going to get it down a little bit. And it's really, I mean, over 90 committees, look at any other town, there is no other town that has this many. If there's a need for a committee, there's a need. But I think at this point in time, I agree with Richard Wells on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto.
Mr. Zulus?
So I, I, I would say that this is one of the areas where a committee is most needed. There may be among those 90 things that are dormant and things that are not needed. But to suggest that, that we don't need a committee to give voice to our teens and to try to, try to help our teens with options and opportunities after school and at other times, you know, I, I, I think we had, as I said, we had something very successful, and there's still work to be done. Where, you know, we don't have our, our teens, I don't think the job is done to have our teens with the full opportunity that they need outside of school time. And so, so I, I, you know, I understand there's a lot of committees, I understand, I understand that we're looking at them, but I think it sends a bad message for us to say, well, we can move forward with committees, but we're not going to, we're not going to worry about the youth task force. I think it sends a bad message. And I think it would be, I think it's a nice, there's nice synergy in reopening the youth center, the start of school, and re-energizing this task force to help, to help our, help teams in this town. So, so I think it's important, and I'm going to continue to advocate in favor of it.
Yeah, I recognize Mr. Wells and then Ms. Musto.
So I, I don't want to, I'm going to make a motion once I'm done here, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And I say this as the father of a teen, and I say this as one who's spent their whole life committed to the safety of kids, and there's no way that the task force's mission was specifically defined, that's what they've done. And I know every single person on that committee. I met with the Reverend's prof, I met with Reverend Allen beforehand, existing Reverend, Paul, I meet with Paul and Kevin all the time, both SRROs, Will, all the players involved. No one's denying any kid any, but you have to have faith in your people. Just as like, as Roxanne says, we have 90 committees, they have work to do, let them do their work. They've got their home. If they come to us and say, hey, we need, you know, and no disrespect to Margaret, she's new at this, Chris Potts, Maria, and Maria and Paul D'Amano have been out on these streets over 30 years working with these kids. So like, I just, I, I'm going to do whatever I can to take something off. It was a task force, the task force did their mission. I intend, I intend that, Mr. Chair, to make a motion that we don't need to fund this at this point.
Okay, thank you for your motion, Mr. Wells and Ms. Musto.
I, I agree with Mr. Wells wholeheartedly, and I would say that it's not a disrespect thing for the kids or for people that have put their time into this committee. I think that they've done a great job, and they deserve, you know, praise for what they've done, as well as the people now that are taking over for the Wildcat Den, the Parks Department, and so forth. I just agree with Mr. Wells that it's not warranted at this time. So I am in agreement with him. Thank you.
Mr. Zulus?
I'm going to oppose the motion. The work of the committee is not done. If you look at the charge, there are things that are not finalized, that were not finished that could be of great benefit to the community. And, and just to say a word, you know, about Ms. Carrolls, she's, she's not new to this. She has been working with the teens and the youth in this town for several years as a, as the driving force behind the coalition. And so when, when she talks about what may be needed for the teens, she knows what she's talking about. So, so I think it's, I think it's very important.
I don't, you're saying that I don't?
I'm sorry?
You're saying that 38 years of public safety, that I don't?
I didn't say anything about, I didn't say anything about your 38 years of public safety, Richard. I'm not sure what, what that means, but, but, so, so I'm going to oppose the motion because I think, you know, the work for the youth of this town is, you know, that was when I, when I first ran for office in 2018, that was the primary need that was, that, that, that parents talked about. It was the primary need, and that drove the founding of this committee, and it drove the, the, the opening of the, of the, of the Wildcat Den, the teen center. And there's still a lot more that needs to be done, so, so I, I really oppose disbanding this committee.
Ms. Musto?
I would just say, I think at this point in time, I don't think it's needed. It doesn't mean that somewhere down the road in a year or two from now, if things change, that you don't revisit this. But for right now, I do agree with Mr. Wells. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Wells has a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I will second that.
The motion is made and seconded. I would just offer the observation from the discussion that is somewhat related to what Roxanne just inferred or stated, and that is, is the, if there is no task force or committee at the present time and staff is operating, should they determine that they need one, they could come to the select board and make that request. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. So any further discussion on the motion that has been made and seconded?
Well, no, I, I would just say, maybe the staff could come, but, but it was the parents that drove this before. It wasn't the staff, it was the parents that drove it. It was the parents who asked for it, it was the parents who needed it. And I, I suspect you're going to see that the parents will ask for it again when they hear that it's been disbanded.
I tend to disagree, Mr. Chair. It was actually the library, Will Adamson, Sarah Tron, and the Parks, and Maria Poles, they were the ones who drove it, brought it to us.
Thank you, everyone. Motion made and seconded. We will take a roll, call, vote, Mr. Zulus?
No.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And although it has failed already, I will vote yes as well. We will at this time turn to the next agenda item, 13, discussion approval recommendation of the local historic district study committee. It may not require approval this evening. We have with us the chair of the committee, Mr. Larry Lawfer. Can he be moved up to a panelist, please? Mr. Lawfer, thank you for being with us. It's good to see you again.
It's, it's a pleasure. Thank you so much. I appreciate being here. I am Larry Lawfer, the chairman of the local historic district study committee. Our committee had its first meeting on September 27th, 2021. The first six months of our committee's existence, we had difficulty keeping our quorum with volunteers coming and going. The charge for this committee is daunting, and it took us some time to find the suitable people to take on this challenge. The original charge was for this group to have its work done in 18 months. We are at the 12-month date. It is possible we name, may not be able to fulfill all of the requirements to complete this work in that timeframe. Tonight is the very first and most important step, getting approval for our suggestion for the district to propose. Over the last year, we completed an exhaustive study of the federal historic sites and guidelines here in Milton. We focused immediately on those six areas, the federal sites, that had already been vetted through the process and designated. There was practical and financial reasons for this decision. With each meeting, we invited people with knowledge and experience to teach us and guide us. Chairman Doyle, we appreciated your visit and guidance. We also had Jen Dougherty of the Mass Historical Commission in a couple of times to discuss the state mandates from her. We also greatly benefited from Cheryl Taggias' visit to discuss the planning board, and that was where we kind of changed direction. Tim Zarwinski, Rob Mallett were also very supportive and helpful. As a committee, we have questions that we can get to here or sometime later. What we can state is that we have a consensus on where we should start with our first local historic district here in Milton. With all the time and work this committee has put in over the last year, it was hard for us to narrow down the field, but we have. We are proposing that we start with Milton Village to work in conjunction with the planning board. Milton Village is not named as one of the six federal districts we've been studying so actively. That was tough for us. Some of the committee feel it makes sense to also include Milton Hill. I'm not so sure. What we need is a clear path to collecting all the necessary information and survey materials to get public feedback and to prepare for the town meeting. The work from here to the point our committee can hand over our work to the next committee is sizable. We will be energized by having a focus on a single area. Thank you for the time. I thank my committee members, Secretary Ryan McLean, William Mullin, Mallory Walsh, Tom McGrath, Andrew Hoffman, and Doug Shyback for the relentless write, the work to get it right. This has been a great deal of work. There's a lot more work to get done, and all we want is an approval to move forward with either Milton Village as our focus or Milton Village and Milton Hill. There are some issues related to money and with, including Milton Hill, because it's far more residential, but I think we can jump through all of those hurdles. Thank you for hearing our, our report.
Thank you very much for being with us, Mr. Lawfer. You, you do not need an action from the select board at this particular time, as I understand matters. Do you anticipate a time when you may, so that we can be preparing to accommodate the committee?
What we need to do next, in talking to Jen Dougherty, we need to create a proposal, making this suggestion, and include all the requirements that the state needs, and we present that proposal to Jen Dougherty. And that really starts us on the clock to ending up with a town meeting approving Milton Village as our first local historic district.
So that would necessitate an article in the town warrant to do so, and we would need to help you with a timeline for that. You have a committee that will be expiring in about six months, is that correct, Larry?
That is, that is absolutely correct, and that is one of the questions that we have. Because it took so long to get people, the right people, onto this board, it was a slower start.
So two thoughts come to mind. One, it does not sound like you would be prepared for the December town meeting, but we should get you the calendar and schedule for that, just so that you have it and you can make your own decisions. Secondly, are you suggesting you might need in a request from the select board to extend the time of the current committee?
That is what the current committee is concerned about. We want to, there, there are timeframes, Chairman. There's 30 days and 60 days increments where we need to There's thirty days and sixty days increments where we need to do some things first for the state and then for the town. And we want to make sure that we have the time to do that correctly. But understanding that Milton Village is going to be our focus, now we can prepare all those documents.
So you might be coming back to us at a later time with a specific extension request?
Uh, most likely.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Wells, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Lawfer. Just when I hear you refer to the state and to the federal, are we talking about two designations, pursuing two designations, like a Massachusetts one and then perhaps a national one or no?
No, no, um, the way it works, uh, uh, Mr. Wells, is that there are three levels of historic designation, each with their own process and procedures and each with their own benefits and requirements. Uh, there are three hundred and fifty-one towns in Massachusetts. Only a hundred and thirty-one of them have local historic districts. It was determined by the select board that we pursue this, and that's where we are right now. We're suggesting Milton Village as our one designation. After we finish this work, we're not doing the work of what they're going to require. Um, and it's certainly not going to be, uh, like in Nantucket where every house has to be the same because that just doesn't work here.
Why not? We've already talked about a hundred other changes tonight. This one, throw in our pile. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Lawfer? Seeing none, we thank you, sir, very much for being with us, and please extend our appreciation to the members of your committee for their work.
Thank you so much. We appreciate doing this work.
Have a great evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Larry was worried that he was number thirteen on the agenda.
I was worried about that, by the way.
That went well. You did a great job.
I want that to be an omen for this group.
We'll turn now to agenda number fourteen, please, which is discussion approval scenic road signage proposal from the conservation commission. I think everybody may have, uh, seen that document just as, um, background information beyond what you have seen. Meredith and I talked about this at our meeting on August fifteenth. Uh, scenic roads, uh, do fall within the purview of the planning board. They would be working out, uh, related details on any scenic road designation, uh, that may be, uh, determined. Uh, she thought that the select board should go ahead with entertaining the front community conservation, uh, commission's recommendation and voting on it. She mentioned that the historic, uh, commission had, um, entertained this item as well. I contacted its chair, Steve O'Donnell, and he reported that the historic commission, historical commission unanimously and enthusiastically, um, approved the resolution. So at this time, um, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the scenic road signage proposal as presented to us from the conservation commission.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, uh, discussion approval municipal broadband committee recommendation of letter to the town institutions about potential broadband services. Mike Zulus, Mr. Zulus, can we turn to you for this, please?
Sure.
Got a little liquid down there.
Yeah, sure. Uh, the recommendation of the committee is, is to reach out to the institutions in town. Let them know that we are in the process of developing a new INAT with additional fiber strands and seeing if there may be some interest on their part in participating or perhaps leasing, uh, fiber strands. So it's outreach to the anchor institutions in town for that purpose. And that, uh, that was something that has been laid out previously to town meeting as town meeting considered the municipal light plant, um, article, articles previously.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Need a motion approved?
That's fine.
We, we have, uh, Roxanne, is that?
No, that's fine. That's fine. Yes.
Okay, so you have, uh, a motion by Mr. Wells, and is that a, and a second from you, Ms. Musto?
Sure.
It's been seconded, uh, discussion. I'll just, uh, mention that, um, the draft letter has the chair as the letter sender. I feel no pride of particular authorship, be happy to do this. Just wanted to recognize that Mike Zulus has carried, uh, much water on this and I would have no difficulty, Mike, if you felt as vice chairman that it would, with your experience, be, uh, something that you would want to do or if it might be something that we might want to go out of from our new town administrator. So you have three options on the table.
You know, the, the, I, I can just say the committee recommended that the chair, uh, send it out. I think that's appropriate. Uh, the responses wouldn't go back to you. We've asked that the responses go back to the secretary of the, of the committee. Uh, but I, but the committee in discussing this determined, number one, committee doesn't have any letterhead. Um, so we thought it appropriate that the, the select board, the select board agreed, send out the letter and that you could send out on behalf of select board.
That's fine. Happy to do so, but just wanted to put all of the options and recognitions on the table. Thank you for that. So, um, is there?
A bit of a vote, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wells, is there a second to the?
Second, second.
I was saying to by Ms. Musto earlier, so roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Given the appointments?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve following. Capital program planning committee, Lorraine D., John Folkorelli, Michael Gale, and William Ritchie. To the local emergency planning committee, Nicholas Milano, to the pilot committee, Nicholas Milano, to the select board landing committee, Nicholas Milano.
Is there a second to these?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Number seventeen, discussion master plan implementation committee appointment process. This is, as we will recall, a, uh, matter that goes back to the May town meeting where town meeting, uh, added two positions uh, to the master plan implementation committee. And, um, these two positions will be jointly appointed by, uh, the select board and the planning board. Meredith and I have, um, met, as I mentioned earlier, we have discussed this. And, um, what I would like to first entertain is, um, some dates that we could, um, give to the chair of the planning board for a joint meeting for these two appointments. So could we take a look at our, our calendars and, um, I might open two suggestions that we might want to forward?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
So if we're just doing two appointments and there'd be nothing else, is this something maybe we could do earlier or maybe even the date in a morning meeting? Could we check on that, see if that's a possibility?
I'm totally open, and I think the planning board would be as well.
Um, I have a tough month. I already emailed Lynn this morning, so this is a tough month for me. I'll be, for work wise, I'll be traveling out of state from the fifteenth to the eighteenth and from the twentieth to the twenty, I'll be back on the twenty-sixth.
I'm sorry, um, this is, you'll be back when?
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. Thank you. So, um, do we want to propose the week of the twenty-sixth?
That would work. Any, that would work for me, but I'll, I'll do whatever.
This be, um, possible for other members? Any problems with that week? Roxanne, you're okay with it?
Yep, seemed to be.
Okay, and that looks good on my calendar as well. Uh, Mike, how are you?
You said the week of the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth of September, yes.
So we're, we're thinking some evening that week or what are we, what are we thinking?
Uh, we could propose, um, something early in the morning and or an evening.
It's probably better to have it in an evening, but, uh, that looks, that week looks okay from my perspective.
Okay. Everybody else could, uh, do evening that week?
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Thank you for that. Uh, the next part of this that we want to flesh out is, um, what we would like to recommend to the planning board as a mutual process. I'm sorry, Roxanne, your hand is raised. I recognize you.
Just a quick question, Chair Doyle. Just wondering if during that, for that week, will you come back with like two possibilities of dates and times or how will we know?
Oh, yeah, definitely we'll come back.
Okay.
That through, uh, Lynn and Nick, of course, after speaking with Meredith, I'll center a communication tomorrow. Ask them for theirs. We've said those five days are okay for us in the evening. Probably not be Friday, um, in all likelihood.
And I believe there's a.
Check on their calendar too.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Have to check on their calendars as well. I'm sorry, Roxanne.
I believe there was a firefighter retirement thing on the twenty-ninth, if anybody is going, um, that we were all invited to in September in the evening, I believe.
Good. Thank you for noting that.
Okay.
So for, uh, the process, um, recommendation, um, we would, of course, and I'm, I'm suggesting that we do this by Zoom. If that's acceptable to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, the select board would open, the meeting, the planning board would open. Uh, we have, um, in the process that was previously, um, discussed and ascertained of background information, um, on the candidates. We had ten candidates. Uh, there are now nine, one withdrew after seeing the, um, expectations, requirements of, uh, background. So we would have the identification and background information for the nine candidates. Uh, the master plan implementation committee has been requested to make its recommendations. So, uh, the select board and the planning board would have their recommendations in front of us, and then we would take a look at how we want to proceed in a, an equitable, uh, and fair process to, uh, the candidates involved. Mr. Zulus, I think you previously, um, recommended for some other work that we might follow the process that was done with the formation of the, um, the town administrator, uh, steering committee where we, we, I gave each one of us the name or names of the people on the list that we, um, recommended for that committee. Would something of that nature surprise or something that was used for the, uh, DEI committee? What would your recommendation be for us to consider and putting forward?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
I'll let Michael answer. I had a thought, but I'll let Michael answer.
No, it's okay.
You don't have a thought.
I think he's letting you go ahead, bitch.
So Mike, so my first question, you, uh, because I didn't know the, so the current MPIC is going to make a recommendation to us before we vote or we're going?
We would have their recommendations jointly before we vote.
So they're going to get the list, they're going to have the list as well?
Yes, correct. That's correct. That's my understanding.
So if that's the case, I mean, we deal with NPC, I, I'd be comfortable just all submitting our list to maybe to Mr. Milano, uh, uh, to you. I don't, I don't. I don't think we have to go as far as what we did for the town minister screening committee. That was a lot of work, but. It's next thing you know, we'll be doing this for all ninety committees and I can see Roxanne's brow wrinkled, yeah, so.
Now, this is an unusual situation, but it is a matter of joint appointments and an opportunity for the two boys to, uh, come together, which we haven't done, at least in my memory.
Right. I don't think we've had, I don't think, I think, I think in my six, this is my, I think we only had one person leave in six years. I mean, other than like by board, you know, by ourselves, by planning board, you know, our board. But as far as the citizens, I don't think it's changed. So do you thought, I mean, that's my thought. My thought is we're down to nine. You want to everyone submit their two to you? I thought, uh, Mr. Milano, I, I see Michael's hand up, so I don't know.
We have, um, we have agreed that we would be together.
Just us first?
No, uh, the two parties.
Okay.
Mrs. Zulus?
So, so as I understand it, there's two ways to do it. As we've discussed before, either we list all the names on the agenda and discuss them all, or we delegate it to a subset of the board to create a slate. Seems to me, since we're meeting with the planning board, delegating it to a subset, a subset to develop a slate doesn't really work. It seems to me we probably need to list all the names and, 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 and discuss it. And, you know, then it's just who makes a motion or who doesn't make a motion or, or perhaps just as a matter of, uh, matter of structure, Arthur, maybe we stay, listen to, everyone give their thoughts initially and, and then we have, um, you know, perhaps a discussion and motions. But, uh, Richard, I think it's, you know, from my point of view, it's similar to what we did when we, we met with the parks commissioners.
I'm fine. I agree. I'm fine with that.
And that's, that's what we did. We just, we had a joint meeting and, uh, people gave their thoughts. We had motions and we, we had a vote. Seems to me that's, that's the way to do it.
Ms. Musto?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would say that we should put all the names out on, uh, an agenda and we should have a discussion, and we don't have to discuss each and every person that's on there. We have their resumes in front of us. But certainly, um, at the joint meeting that we could put forward who we, you know, would like. Um, because we're trying to have an open process and be transparent and, um, and yet we don't want few people to feel badly. And I think that, you know, we have a lot of great community candidates that have put their names forward. And there are some, there is some guidance, um, in who should be selected according to what town meeting voted on. So I think we have some guidance there. And we can go and look at the resumes that people have put forward. Um, and I'm all about transparency and I think that that would be the way to go. And I, I do like the fact that we should have this joint meeting and have the names there and, and get some feedback. You know, there, you know, I, I would like to hear from the other members on the, the planning board as well to hear what their input is. You know, uh, we should be listening to everybody's input here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. That makes sense, and do we have a, a sense of consensus as to where we are?
I just have one question. I just, just backed up what, what Mike Zulus said. The only difference was like in the planning, in the parks departments, didn't we bring them all in and interview them too?
Yeah, that was, that was the only difference. Here we don't, here we don't need to interview them.
All right, okay.
Because that was for an appointment of a parks commissioner, but just in terms of the process of a joint meeting, listing all the names and having a fulsome discussion. Um, and Roxanne's right, we don't need to discuss everyone.
Right.
But, but we may. People may decide, right? It's up to, it's up to everyone at the meeting.
Right.
All right. I think we have a, a sense of direction. We'll, uh, rely upon your notes when I'm going to. We'll rely upon your notes. Lynn, I'm going to ask you if I can get an extract of those so that I reliably communicate to the chair of the planning board. Thank you. On our next item, we have a discussion approval proclamation, childhood cancer awareness month.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to the?
Second.
Yeah, I'm gonna, so I'll move to approve the proclamation for childhood cancer awareness month.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
We need to sign this, correct? I see Lynn, I just saw Lynn saying. Let's vote.
Hey, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Town administrators report. And we turn to our town administrator and our interim town administrator for topics that would fall under their report at this time.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Administrator.
I've, I certainly don't have much to report back to you tonight. I mentioned it earlier at the top of the meeting, what I've been up to the last day and a half, I guess, two days. I would just add that the special town or the Fall Town Meeting for December fifth is coming up, as is the deadline for Warren Articles of October twelfth. I just want to put that up there for folks as a reminder. We're looking forward to seeing those come in. Otherwise, I'm not having a house this evening. I remember.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to mention a couple.
Jump in for a minute. Mr. Milano, were you suggesting that we put that on our website too? Is that part of your suggestion so that everybody has a reminder there?
Yes, well, I thought I saw it up there, but I was looking just now at, okay, it is, so.
But you will have to scroll down, right, to find it now?
We can get it back up to the top.
Well, I have a tagline that says, scroll down for it. It's posted. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you. Read back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to talk about a couple of community events coming up. As we all know, and I think Mr. Zulus was challenged on this one, Milton Glows Gold is September thirtieth. It's a walk, run, ride event. On September thirtieth, they request that you wear a gold colored jersey, put a candle in the window, put a gold ribbon on your door. And again, it was for that child that was died of childhood cancer and his mother was at our last meeting and so bravely talked about this and this nonprofit that she had put together. So I hope to see you all there on September thirtieth for the walk, run, ride event. And if you need any further information, you can go to MiltonGlowsgold.org to sign up for the event. It is a great community event. A couple of other community events is Celebrate Milton is going to be coming up and that is going to be Sunday, October second at Pierce. You know, that's a wonderful community event from all sides of town, come together and join festivities, informational booths. And it's it's a great take. And lastly, the Centennial Mass of Thanksgiving at St. Agatha's Church is September twenty fifth at eleven thirty AM. And you will have a proclamation on your September twentieth agenda for that special event. And that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for the Nick or Emily? Seeing none, I'll only make one point under the chair. And that is that we have received a couple of inquiries about whether or not there will be a rededication of the Deck in East Milton in Manning Park. That has come from a couple of different sources, as I mentioned. I would like to suggest, what that I contacted the director of PPW, Chase Berkeley, who indicated that Mastard has said that they do not plan to have a formal rededication event or ceremony for the reopening of the deck. We have constituents who would like to do so and I'd like to put this forward to you. Particularly in a manner whereby we could do this with a group that is interested in support without establishing a committee per se. That be okay, Roxanne?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
If you like, I will gladly take the lead on this and come back to you with a couple of dates and I will make this happen for you.
That'll be wonderful. Is that agreeable to everybody else?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Wells. Future meeting dates, we all have the calendar. What I'd like to suggest is that we revisit the dates that we have been holding tentatively for the select board retreat. We've seen that the seventeenth is a little tight for us. We need to be sure that Nick has an opportunity to get more aboard. And I'd like to suggest that if it's all right with you, we identify as our first opportunity, the second date, which is September twenty fourth. Or see if, well, see if any of you would like to move into an October date, recognizing that we have, of course, a holiday weekend coming up in October. The retreats are held on Saturdays, usually from twelve to three. And they've been held the last couple of years, the the COA building. So I toss that out to you for comment. Should we stay with the twenty fourth? As an alternative date recommended? Ms. Musto?
I think we should ask Mr. Milano, you know, if he feels that, you know, the twenty fourth or maybe pushing it off until the beginning of October might be better. So he has a little more time to get acclimated.
I didn't feel, I didn't feel like that was too soon. I felt like it was, you know, three weeks and I have a kind of overall sense of what's going on. But it's to be able to be informed by the conversation to then go back to department heads and and staff to just kind of start checking off those goals would be helpful at this early phase two before it gets too far away from us. So I think the timeline for me is is not a worry. I'm always comfortable with the twenty fourth, but thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's sit with the twenty fourth for now.
Mr. Chair, I won't, as I stated earlier, I won't be.
Oh, yes, that's right. You don't get back until the twenty sixth.
Don't hold this up for me.
Oh, you're such an important cog.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
That's for, I'm serious, like if if this works for everyone else, do it.
Well, that's.
It's not like you won't fill me in. I think it's more important that you get it done. Because then you're in October, holiday weekends, just, I know it's Labor Day, but you're going to be decorating the Christmas tree on the deck before we know it. Emery has her hand up.
Emery?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let Milton Access know that the phone in the attendee list is actually Erin Bradley and should like to be moved into participant.
Great.
I mean, from participant into a panelist. If that can be arranged.
I'll just swipe her credit card right through the key and she'll get right in.
I told her we were outstanding, but she wanted to be moved in.
Thank you, Emery.
Okay, motion adjourned?
Yeah, we're waiting, we're waiting for Erin to make that motion, right? In the meantime, to accommodate Richard's schedule, it would seem Saturday, October one, and that would avoid the Columbus Day weekend. Could people check calendars and see if that would be okay?
That would be fine.
Okay. Mrs. Zulus, would that work for you?
I need, I need to check that one on the on the home front. Saturday, October one?
Yes.
First.
I need to check that on the home.
Okay, so we'll hold those two dates until we hear back from everybody. And we don't have Erin in with us yet. I don't want to be impolite.
She said she. Lynn, can you move her over to panelist? It won't let me do it.
Okay, why don't you just text? I mean, we're just about to adjourn. Why don't you just text Emery that we're about to adjourn?
Yep. She's texting me. She can't do ten one.
Okay, so we have a motion to leave, Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Ms. Musto, a second?
Sure.
Roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you all for a very productive, busy evening. Much on our platters, it's going to be quite a year. Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Night, kids.